Good evening and welcome to the September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen Norfolk Planning Board. Please be aware that tonight's meeting is being videotaped and audiotaped. And if you are going to be speaking tonight, please use the microphone that is provided. Not necessarily for us here in the, in the room, but for those who will be viewing this on that videotape later. Our first order of business is one thirty-four Main Street site plan and special permits continued from July twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dan Merrick with Merrick Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. When we last met, you guys asked us to go back and look at some alternatives. And we have done that. And we don't really like the alternatives. But we wanted to discuss them with you and explain them to you and, you know, maybe revisit. So this is our original design. This is design that is technically before you, just to recap. We're moving the driveway down the hill a little bit, propose it to come in. We talked about maybe taking this drive-through lane and moving it out into this parking aisle and dedicating these to employee parking spaces as a possibility. The drive-through pattern basically would be the same as it is today, except we were proposed to come out onto Carlson Circle. And that would allow us the opportunity to have some parking spaces up front, in front of the, in front of the Dunkin' Donuts facility. So you asked us to go back and look at taking this proposed building, which is a three-story building with two, two upper stories of apartments and one lower story of commercial or restaurant or something like that, and moving it away from the Dunkin' Donuts and forward on the site. So Betsy, if you wouldn't mind flipping to page two. This is one of the scenarios that we looked at. This takes a similar building footprint, but it's kind of flipped ninety degrees or so because we have some constraints, the existing septic system. So what, what happens here is this is the existing septic system. So if we're going to move the building to the right and forward, we would leave this septic system and we have to maintain certain setbacks to that septic system. So that basically constrains our building pad envelope over here. The, part of the conversation was you wanted to see possibly a drive-through that circulated all the way around the site to maximize queuing potential. And, I mean, it's, it's here. We don't really like it. You know, you got a, you got a driving aisle in front of the building between it and the street, big retaining wall all the way around the right side, and, you know, we have, we end up losing a lot of septic capacity. We lose sixteen hundred gallons per day and in septic capacity, we lose three parking spaces. And what that does is that basically will constrain in a pretty significant way, you know, what you can do on the first floor of this building in terms of potential uses, you know. The Primus family would like to see maybe another little restaurant in there and, and that might, that might not allow for that possibility. So this is one of the scen, sorry about that. This is one of the two scenarios that we looked at. The second scenario is on the next page. This we looked at not doing the looping driveway around the building. So you end up taking the same building footprint, you slide it forward to the nineteen feet, you slide it to the right so it's clear of the existing septic system. You end up with the existing drive-through aisle here. But it, I mean, you could probably tell right off the bat, it creates a problem because, you know, access to the back here is encumbered by the drive-through queue, you know. And we could put a break in the parking here, but you're still going to have a, you have to get through the drive-through queue to get to any of this parking. We looked at the possibility of coming off the right-of-way. The problem with that is a grade differential. You can see this would be our new septic system and again, we, we continue to lose capacity even with this footprint. On this footprint, we lose eleven hundred gallons per day in available septic system capacity, which again constrains our first floor potential commercial use. If we were to come off the right-of-way with a driveway, basically this entire row of parking has to go away. And this septic system has to get smaller because there's a six or seven-foot grade differential between our pad height here and the right-of-way height here. So this would have to become a ramp. We have to build a big retaining wall here and you dedicate a ramp that would get you up into the site and then you get into the site and you'd, you know, you have to go this way to a parking area or this way over to the drive-through. And it, it would displace too many parking spaces and it would displace a lot of septic capacity again. So we've looked at this a bunch of different ways and, you know, we, we have come back to, the applicant has come back to a really strong preference to, to stay with something at least very similar to what we have proposed to you in terms of building placement. So we would like to just hear the board's thoughts and, and see if maybe there can be some reconsideration of your views on that.
Bets, can you circle back to the first one? So how does this differ from what was on the table before? Some tweaks you said you made to the-
No, this is what, this is what we-
That is the same plan?
Yeah, this is the same plan that we submitted to use, just for reference sake. We haven't changed anything yet.
Okay, yet.
Right. So one of the things that we, you know, to redesign the whole site obviously is a huge undertaking. So we want to, we want to kind of narrow it down. If we're going to look at a variant of this, one of the things that we did talk about was, you know, taking this drive-through lane and kicking it out in here and dedicating these to employee parking spaces. There was a concern about left turns out of here. We had a thought that perhaps it could be addressed with signage. You know, the MBTA parking lot, you know, is pretty much full up, seven, seven fifteen in the morning. You know, if there was signage here that basically indicated no left turn during certain peak hours in the morning, that that could possibly address a concern there. Those were some of the thoughts that we had. They did look at the possibility of moving the drive-through window to the back of the building and it, it, it just doesn't work. It would involve a massive renovation of that existing building. So we haven't touched that yet, you know, and obviously what we do will, will depend on what kind of feedback we get coming out of this meeting.
What's driving the number of parking spaces here?
As many as we can get, basically. We have forty-four on the design before you. Could be two alternatives lose to go down to either forty-two or forty-one.
It's required by zoning. How much is required by zoning?
Well, it depends on what that first floor uses, which we don't know yet. So, I mean, we meet if it's considered retail, we meet it- Sorry, if it's considered retail, we meet it. If there was a, a portion of that first floor was a restaurant, we would meet it. So, you know, that-
Meet it, mean forty-four spaces?
Yes, or less. You know, we basically fit as many parking spaces as we could on the site.
That's where I'm going though. I think one of the really nice things about the Dunkin' Donuts today is that it looks like a house with a yard. That, that looks like an industrial complex. Well, that might be an overstatement. But we've taken, you know, what is a relatively natively designed building, surrounded it with a parking lot and decreased all of the landscaping around the site.
There is no, essentially, yeah.
Well, I mean, that is the nature of development. And we do have a landscape plan proposed to-
But you, but, I mean, again, if that, if the, just thinking it through, again, I know you explained some of the realities of your drive, drive path. But for instance, if the proposed three-story building was to come closer to the street and the angled parking along the street was to move behind the building rather than in front of the building, you know, maybe we could address some of those issues. But I, I don't mean to dwell on that situation either. It's just an unfortunate situation where we are. I have another question though. The retaining wall on the backside, do we know how tall that wall is? Did you mention that?
Well, there's an existing retaining wall back here.
The other side, the right-hand side.
And then there's a, I don't remember off the top of my head. I think it's five or six feet. That basically is driven by the septic system. Septic system has to be a certain number of feet above the high groundwater. We do the testing.
Right, so now what we're gonna-
So this is our, this is our proposed septic system, this whole side, basically from this green box right here. That is our proposed septic system.
Now what we've got, now what you've got, which again is a relatively rural street, is going to have a five-foot wall with a five-foot fence on top of it. So it's going to become a canyon, right? Kind of like the other side.
Talking about along the right-of-way?
Yeah.
So, I mean, the right-of-way is sloping downhill and obviously this is commercial back here and you got the parking lot. So, you know, the wall kind of tapers from, from very little to, and it gets progressively higher as you get back.
Will there be a field stone wall?
Basically. We hadn't really, we specked out a modular block wall. I hadn't really discussed with the applicant, you know, which particular style they would prefer.
Voting calls for field stone wall.
Okay.
A field stone wall just, as Eric was talking about, just makes the whole setting more country rather than a block wall. I know it's expensive.
So, obviously I wasn't here on the last meeting. I usually don't miss meetings, but, um, so what we're trying to accomplish, I don't know if any of you ever drive through the town of Westwood at all, Islington, Dedham. We are essentially trying to replicate what they've done in Westwood, in Islington Center. So I can assure you, our property won't look like an industrial park, because that's not the point. And most people would, I'm big on landscaping. So we'll have as much landscaping as, as humanly possible. However, what's going to draw traffic to the site is the building. People are going to want to go to a nice building. We're requesting what Dan put together is because doing anything else to the property is not going to get us what we want to do. So we obviously want to do a restaurant. We have a few in mind. And I just think, or we both think, that's the best on this side of town. There's literally nothing for people getting off the train to do anything. And in order for us to get a restaurant that would fill the capacity of our first drawing, we really can't reconfigure the property at all. It's just not possible. And I think going back, I know some of you are new on the board, but I think going back a year ago when we proposed this, the only negative feedback was the parking of the Dunkin'. There was no negative feedback regarding the, the exit onto Carlson, if I recall correctly, reading, watching the video. So with that being said, I had sent Rich some data today, sent it to Dan. And I made a, I actually personally made the suggestion that we should have some type of a sign similar to what, you know, school buses have in neighborhoods where you can't make a left turn or whatever it is between such and such hours, peak hours. So we'd be willing to do that. I think we should do that. And I think at the end of the day, people will figure out how to exit and they won't, they won't lose sleep over it. And it would actually be better for traffic flow too.
When you were here, John, we had talked about the thought of having tables and seating in the front. And that was for, first of all, town bylaws don't allow parking in the front, as you know. So when this pla, you don't have it right now in Dunkin' Donuts. So with this plan here, I mean, I, I want you guys to work with the site. And Dan's going to know how best to work with the site. He's been spending the time. So I don't want to go preach to him what's best. But I, I do think it, with all of the parking spots in the front, I think it just blocks the view of everything with that activity. And number two, the going in and out could be an issue, although I don't think it will be with the dag or parking. But I, I really would like to not see parking in the front of the building. I'd like to see you get those spots where there are seven spots or so. Can you find another room?
Could I make a suggestion?
Sorry if I'm wigging you. This, this pathway in front of the buildings seems like it's really just to get into these spaces. Is that correct? So if you slid the building up and these parking spaces behind the building, you could perhaps have that outside eating area in this area so that you wouldn't need this at all. I, so you'd have parking spaces back here, building comes forward, and then this is an outside area.
So the concern, the concern with that is, so the only reason we have those eight proposed spots is for, you know, mothers with their kids, families to park there and to come inside the store. If we move the building forward, they'll have to walk way too far. So that, that-
And that was the reason we wanted the building separated so you could have the parking between the buildings.
Right.
That was the theory on that. And that accomplished you not needing a waiver on the regulations for parking in the front. So we were with that same reason. Yes, you're right.
That's why we, we tend to favor the third, third option that you've got here. Could we put that back up, Bets? Now here, you've got no parking in the front. You've got a couple of spots there that, in that vertical parking to the right next to the drive-through. But your drive-through is, is still a large queue. You've got the parking essentially in the rear. Now the compromise, as I understand it from, from Dan, was a reduction in, in septic, which affects your ability to put a, a restaurant in there. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, exactly. So with this proposed plan, and Dan will correct me if I'm wrong, but we go from thirty-six hundred gallons a day to twenty-three hundred. That's a significant drop. You basically can't even put a restaurant. And this plan, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong. The only way to access over here, you've got to come in this way. So you're still coming in through the queue, which is not ideal. So that, like, what's going to happen if these people want to leave or someone from here wants to go inside? It's just, it, it just doesn't work. It's just not a- I've spent countless hours on, on Google Maps trying to figure out the best possible scenario when I talk to Dan. And I hate trying to keep beating, beating a bush here, but the original plan we have works best for this location. We, I mean, to go back on the outdoor seating, my concern moving outdoor seating to the front of the building in this area is I, I just don't want kids sitting out there and then having a car hit them or something. I would just much rather have it where it is right now. We don't even get that much use out of it. We do in the months of May and June, but we don't get nearly the activity with our outdoor seating as like some of my, some of my Foxborough store does. So I would be more inclined to leave it here. We have four tables. We could add a fifth. I mean, we're talking about eight people per table to sit. That's, that's forty seats. So moving it up here, I just-
Well, the traffic's not an issue because you wouldn't have cars going by there without the parking if they were sitting in the front, correct?
And the other point to have the building we were proposing is, yeah, you might have a restaurant, you may not. Tenants might sign a ten-year lease or whatever, a twenty-year lease. But then on year eleven, on year, whoever, if they leave, let's say, we want to have the option to put a restaurant, to put whomever. We want to maximize the septic capacity. So if it is a restaurant, they can go there. If it's a, I don't know, if it's a gym or something, they can go there, whatever it may be. But we're looking for a restaurant and the only way to put a restaurant of that size would be where it is over the existing parking lot. We just want to have as many options as possible that, you know, if we're looking for tenants, it can be basically whomever at that point.
Let me, let me ask the board a question. I mean, if we go back to the original plan, Betsy, please, they're proposed, remain proposed, I guess. If I'm hearing the board correctly, the only objection to this plan is the parking spaces in front.
That's my objection.
And mine as well. Not, maybe not the only one. I think we also discussed the concern about if you come in to the, to the entrance, turn right and park over there, you've got to walk through, drive through to get to the, to the new building.
So, I'm glad you brought that up. So last August, when I was here, if you were here, but when I was here, that was a concern. So we had suggested and the board was agreed with this, that we would put something like this in this area for, you know, customers to walk and down here. And again, I'll have to watch the video again, but I was under the impression that that was okay. That's why we-
Describe what it is, is you just, you're referencing-
Like the walkway here, the crosswalk?
Yeah.
We had mentioned doing something like that over in this area and the board was okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you, if you look at the site and the fact that you can't access it from the back and you can't access it from plan right, I mean, you're extremely limited in what you can do.
Where do walkers come in to?
But the, the compromise here is, is one of two ways. Either you compromise parking in front or you compromise, I mean, in any either condition, pedestrians have to cross an active way to get into the building. This building is surrounded by active ways.
Do you have any questions? When we were here last time, I never, or at least myself, wasn't thinking of you were moving the building all the way to the far right of the lot. I thought you were moving the building somewhat over, but still have all of that parking on the right-hand side. And between the two buildings, we were going to have the parking spot for each of the two buildings.
Well, so-
Both of these plans show the building to the far end of the lot.
So this is a, you know, this is a parking field. Like you can see, it's like sixty feet wide. So if we're going to get parking between the two buildings, you need sixty feet of pavement plus a couple of sidewalks. You know, you need seven, eight feet, which is, you know, basically if you look at the other scenarios, that's what you end up with. And at that point, you know, we're not disturbing the existing septic system. So we don't want to blow up the septic system. We want to make, maintain those setbacks that we're required to, to the septic system. You know, you could, if you did away with this drive-through lane and had drive-through traffic queue through this parking aisle, I could slide the building over, you know, fifteen feet or so, certainly. And that wouldn't affect anything and you would end up with more space in between, but not, not enough for parking. To, to put a parking field between the two buildings, the buildings have to be a minimum of seventy feet apart if you're going to get two rows.
No, one row.
Okay, so one row would be twenty-four and twenty, forty, fifty, it's fifty-five feet maybe with walkways, sixty feet. It's a substantial amount of space to be able to get parking in between the two buildings. And then at that point, you know, if we're, you know, if we're infringing on the septic system by ten or fifteen feet, we don't want to blow up that whole existing septic system, you know, it's kind of, you know what I mean?
Is, is the existing septic sys, what's the capacity of the exist, existing septic system? Is there excess capacity in it?
No, it's designed for the Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, I understand, but where's the- Sometimes they're overdesigned. Yeah, I understand, but sometimes they're overdesigned if there's space available.
So-
It was not overdesigned.
So, yeah, it wasn't. So this, this existing septic system is right here. So right here, we have existing parking. This is a twenty-five-year-old septic system. This will fail within, if we make it another ten years, that's a blessing, but the reason why we wanna put this here is because we wanna first build the septic, build it right here, connect to this one, remodel our existing Dunkin' Donuts, do a whole new next-gen image with a, like a Baskin-Robbins slash Dunkin', make it all brand-new inside all state-of-the-art technology, and only close down for about a couple of weeks to connect piping and to do everything else. If we go over here, we put a septic here for this building, and let's say this fails in five years, then we're looking at like a couple of months and we're gonna have a lot of pissed-off customers.
Have you only looked at a conventional septic system that's a big rectangular area?
It's a pressure-dosed septic system, which is typical for this type of a use. I don't know what you mean by conventional, I mean, it's a trench system with pressure dosing.
Right, but the trenches also could come at an angle and meet in the center with a D-Box or something, correct?
Um, yeah, the trenches could be at any angle.
You also could have the septic syst- you could have the septic system underneath the drive-through.
Well, we have the septic system, yeah, we basically have maximized our se- we have a whole row of pressure-dose trenches all through here. That's what's proposed.
What I'm, I guess what I'm-
So the idea was you go and you build this whole system, get it inspected, tested, proved, and operational, you connect the Dunkin' Donuts to it.
Right, no, I understand, I just wondered if there's a way that you could-
Almost a seamless.
Have a system designed to make the buildings work better, that's all, that's all.
I guess if I could ask the board, I'm failing to recognize why the third option is better than this option. I'm saying because if you made it all the way to the back, you could walk into the back of the restaurant? Sketch B, so it's the third-
Page three.
Yeah, page three. I'm not, I'm not understanding why we would think this is a better plan than-
You said that.
Well, I, I don't know.
There's no access to the back end.
I thought someone suggested that this plan-
Pardon?
For me, it was, or it is, I should say.
Are you walking over the traffic area no matter which way you go?
Well, I guess that's my question, I guess, Walter. You know, is that what, the thought, Walter, here was, is that if you parked in the back, you could walk into the restaurant without crossing-
Well, you could also get into that restaurant, or whatever it's going to be, from the, from the rear without having to cross through the, the drive-through, you know?
Right, I got, I've got one more proposal and I'll stop talking for tonight. Betsy, sorry.
Whole night?
Not necessarily.
If we could go back to the first, to the first page. Again, I just, I recognize that development takes space and compromise, but these buildings are so isolated in an asphalt field, it's kind of unfortunate. I'm wondering if maybe we could somehow compromise between getting rid of all of the parking spaces in front, and maybe you keep the four or five there in front of Dunkin' Donuts, and the walkway to the right, those three or four spaces become landscaped.
Looks like there's three there with a walkway, yeah.
So you'd basically be losing three spaces, and I also think you'd benefit from that walkway that you mentioned, which would be, if the, if you took the path that's in front of the building and you extended a crosswalk-type thing to the parking lot on the side, I think-
How do you get to those parking spots in front of Dunkin' Donuts?
They primarily-
You park, you park, no, you wouldn't, I'm sorry. I'll just come up to the board and draw in the air. I guess what I'm saying is if you pulled the landscape curve up so it was something like this, so that this was a landscaped area, you kept the drive-through, but there were only maybe four or five parking spaces here for Dunkin' Donuts, or an accessible one for the restaurant or whatever, but-
I think the concern with that is we're still, Dan-
The other thought was, is that, like, the crosswalk you have here, I think you're gonna need one there, too.
Yeah, I agree with the crosswalk here. I think the problem with that, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, even if we got rid of like two spots, we still need the two handicap spots just because of all the, so that's the problem. So if we get a waiver and just have one handicap, which we probably won't get-
But you could put one in back and have a back door, I mean, it's not-
To the Dunkin', we wouldn't be able to do that. That's not an option.
You need two for Dunkin', or you need two for the site?
Two for the site.
Yeah, so one for Dunkin' and one for the other building.
So the only, so the only thing, and I try to look at the entire big picture about front parking here, so our other location in town is the gas station, we have front parking there, there was never an issue with that. As you know, some of our adjacent neighbors have front parking, a lot more front parking and much, much less landscaping, so this is why we're asking, because this is the best setup for people not having to park this far away to walk, so you can have eight spots here, call it six without the handicap, and they can walk right in. This is why we need the front spots. I'm not, we're not putting it in just because we wanna put in pavement, we're doing it because we need it for our customers, because they're gonna wanna park there, they're not gonna wanna park too far away.
Well, I understand, and if you look at the third option, that's one of the benefits of it, you've got a whole parking field right between the two buildings. They don't have to walk that far from the, from the parking, between the two buildings to get into the existing Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the problem is the drive-through queue, that's the problem with this. If this gets backed up, which we've, I think we've done a pretty admirable job since we originally redid the drive-through queue from where it used to be here, since we've redone this, if this gets backed up right here, and let's say there's an, like, someone needs to leave or whatever, you're dead, because you can't get anywhere, just because-
Try and get over?
Yep. All right, can I take my turn of getting shot down?
Sure.
So as it pertains to this one, I'm gonna go through a couple of things. Stop me when I start breaking laws, okay? First part, I would say, what if we looked at using this setup? And we get rid of all of this entryway from the main street, all right? We don't use anything over here, we extend down the parking as far as we can, and we utilize the space in front of here as green space. We have our entry point, like you had described over here, coming in, in the back area over here. I know you said that you were gonna lose some of these eleven parking spots at the top, but you would be able to gain some of them back coming down this way on the side, not all of them, but some of them. And then coming from this side, you'd be able to continue to have that go straight into your queue, or go directly down to the parking behind the restaurant, proposed restaurant, or go straight out and be able to come out this way. And then on this side, on the other plan, you had the ability to come out on this point over here, you'd be able to have that come out of your drive-through, so it's not- So clever, very clever idea, I actually said something like that to Dan, the problem again is we lose a ton of septic capacity, right? That's the problem. It eats significantly, we're talking like a thousand, or thirteen hundred, or even a thousand a day, that's like, it's like a third a day, it's a lot.
Wait a minute, what if you swap the, the septic field? If you're gonna put in a new septic field up here to handle the new building, make that for Dunkin', and redo the one in the middle that you're worried about is gonna fail anyway?
So, yes-
And make that for the new building.
This will, that won't be big enough to support.
Like both of them?
Yeah, so this, this right here will fail within, we've had, we've had two septic companies look at this, this will fail within the next ten years.
I understand, so redo it and make it for the new building and put the septic for Dunkin' up on the right corner.
Take the septic you've got proposed in your proposed and slide it into the middle. The same layout you've got in the proposed, slide it to the left, so it's in the middle.
Shut down.
We're gonna be shut down for a long time, and a lot of people are gonna be pissed off, so we're not willing to do that. I mean, we're already spending a lot of money on site plan reviews and spending a lot of money on construction. It's, for us to do what you had just mentioned would be a significant loss of sales, easy one month, and there'll be a lot of people that are unhappy.
As opposed to two weeks is what you have?
Yeah, so if we go back to plan number one, I hate to keep going back, but I just try to make everyone see the big picture. We are trying to minimize us closing. You're looking at probably, best-case scenario, I've talked to, I've already talked to two or three site, siteware contractors, two weeks, connect pipe, build septic, minimal disruption. They even even mentioned putting up temporary gates and working around stuff, closing drive-through, closing the front, so we've always worked with the town, no matter what they've asked us to do. I'm, we're asking to take this plan into consideration because we personally feel this is the best setup for this location. And that will maximize, you know, the site.
I got one more question. How many residents?
Eight, it's eight, it's four two-bedroom apartments, eight bedrooms.
So that's sixteen cars?
It's, the requirement is one and a half per unit, undesigned.
So it's ten cars, so ten of the forty-four spaces are taken.
That's correct. Oh, it's actually six, sorry, one and a half times four, six spaces.
Asphalt.
Six spaces.
It's tough, it's a tough site.
Dan, let's see, if we, if we follow your suggestion and put up a no-left turn at the exit there, that means you can't use that exit, right, essentially? For a certain number of hours?
So my, my, when, when we met with Dan this morning, then we met with Rich, our suggestion was, you exit from here, but when you exit, say, just use the hours of six to nine, those are our busiest hours in the morning, even, call it even six to ten if you want. Cars exit only this way, they have to go up and around, or they can navigate through the MBTA, but they would probably go up and around. We wouldn't want cars going this way. I agree, like, we agree with, I think it was Chief Stone's concern that this would cause a backup, and I totally agree with that.
What's to prevent them from saying, "The hell with you, I'm gonna drive the wrong way through the, through the front and go out on the main street"?
Well, to be honest with you, we have people right now, we have a huge unit on its time, we have people coming in this way, so there's gonna be some people that are gonna do that, that just won't care.
A lot of people will leave that site on the side street and turn left onto Main Street, just the way it is.
So we would do, we would put as big a signs as the town would allow us to do and to, to help with the traffic flow. I mean, I've spent the last ten days, you know, parked right out here, and I've been trying to watch what time this lot is full. MBTA lot by seven-thirty, seven-forty-five is completely packed, so the majority of the cars are coming in six-fifteen, six-forty-five, seven. After that, Carlson Circle just has DPW trucks parking to come get a coffee. It's ninety percent of the people that are coming down this road.
You said your next-gen renovation is gonna be all interior, there's gonna be nothing done to the exterior?
There'll be, so there'll, again, so that depends on what the town would allow us to do based on current bylaws.
Gotcha.
I'm going to the next-gen conference.
Ah, nice.
I'm going to the next-gen Dunkin' Baskin' conference on Monday, this upcoming week, so I'm gonna know. The outside will probably be painted, like, I think we discussed it was like a dark gray the last meeting, to give it a modern look. The inside is a full gut, complete full gut, like, the store, it goes down to the studs. It's a look that you've probably never seen before. It's that modern of a look.
Is that going to be done within the timeframe?
So it takes two to three weeks to do the full renovation, so when we calculated how long the septic connection would take, call it three weeks, call it a month, like, we always do a little bit higher, 'cause you never know. But three weeks is probably a good estimate, so since that took three weeks and our next-gen would take three weeks, that's the-
Working one, working one shift, I mean, the construction's one shift?
Well, I mean, yeah.
You would, so, you would have, you'd have a site contractor doing the septic, and then you'd have an approved GC contractor doing the Dunkin' Baskin' work.
Both of them are working one shift.
Yeah, they're both working, like, you know, whether it's, I don't know, eight to five, eight to six, whatever, but yeah.
I, John, I have Rich looking up, normally when you have this many commercial parking spaces, there's, again, for the, the look, so it's not all asphalt on the planet, it's not much green, we normally have places for separations of the parking spots with islands, just again, to break it up, to put green stuff in there.
Yep.
You ever consider that?
Absolutely.
But you lose spots.
Dan, what's, what's back here?
So this is all landscaping, are you through it? Yep, everything green is landscaping. This is all landscaping, this is all landscaping, this is all landscaping, this is all landscaping, this is all landscaping?
There's quite a bit, I mean, there's a lot of landscaping, again, compared to some of my adjacent neighbors.
Yep.
I hate to keep saying that, but-
Well, they're under the old zoning rules.
I know. I can assure, I can assure the board, we will not cheap out on landscaping. Like, we'll have very good landscape, we'll have a well, the place will look very good, just like our Dedham Street location looks pretty good.
The landscaping, the percentage of landscaping is less than the percentage of asphalt, so therefore you've got an uphill ascent. But that's, that's a subjective conversation, we don't need to continue to go at each other on. I guess what, I guess I, I'll end with, 'cause we can talk for all night on this one, I just, as someone who spends a lot of time in the center of town, I'm not sitting here looking at this plan, I don't think I'm gonna be overly excited about wanting to spend time in that first floor, because I'm surrounded by a parking lot. Even, even taking the seating that's outside Dunkin' Donuts today, which, again, may or may not be utilized, I've sat in that seating and I feel like I'm sitting in a parking lot. So, you know, you're in, you're in a downtown of a rural town, and you're sitting in a parking lot. It's just, I'd like to think we, the collective we, could do better, so that's why I'm pushing, I'm pushing so hard on this parking lot stuff.
And that's where the front fits in.
Right, and I recognize it's a really tough site, I just feel like if we could find a way to keep a portion of the site so that it feels less like you're at Gillette, you know, and you're surrounded by parking spaces, and I know I'm editorializing, I just feel like it would be a more successful plan, and I don't think sacrificing three parking spaces is a lot to ask for, for that out in front of the new, the new building. That's, that's my thoughts on the subject.
Following up on that, you know, if we did, if we did get rid of this drive-through lane and kick it over into here, this could become a much larger green space, or we could, you know, pull this building over ten or maybe fifteen feet and, you know, do some green in between, is a possibility.
Yeah, it, yeah, it just really messes with the flow of your traffic. I mean, that's, that's the thing here, I mean, your traffic flow on this is like, is what's driving all of this, and, and it's, again, you're talking about a rural downtown, and we're sitting here trying to plan a site around traffic flow, it just seems ass-backwards.
Well, see, with the layout that, that presumably exists, how many cars can get in the queue?
I don't know that number off the top of my head, I think it's-
Twelve, fifteen?
At least fifteen, yeah.
And what about this one?
Well, it's basically the same. It's more or less the same queue. This driveway is, is just about in the same place as the current drive-through lane.
So it doesn't change it one, really one way or the other?
No. I mean, technically, technically if you went out through here, you would get a little more-
Yeah, sure.
You would get a little more queue, you'd have a couple of cars in the mix.
What about, let's talk about between the buildings a little bit, I just can't stop talking, you guys are gonna have to stop me at some point. So it's shown as gray, like, it's a paved area now, I mean, what if that was treated more like, you know, a city alley, where maybe it had hanging lights and it was treated as an outdoor plaza rather than as a parking lot, right?
That could be done.
And it was shared between the retail space and the Dunkin' Donuts space. So at least there was some outdoor space that wasn't surrounded by a parking lot that might be enjoyable to sit in.
Yes, that can be done.
I mean, that would, that, that might cost you making that drive-through for that right-hand parking lot instead of two-way, one-way. Not that one, move over to that guy.
Well, you need two-way for perpendicular parking. I mean, you don't need two-way flow, but you need two-way width, you need twenty-four feet of driving aisle for perpendicular parking. Angled parking is a lot less efficient in terms of, you know, spaces per whatever, a thousand square feet. Perpendicular parking gets you the most parking for the least amount of pavement.
Fair, but in order to accomplish what he was talking about, you need space, you gotta do, something's gotta go on that right-hand side there.
Is there an ADA requirement that will always force some space or two to be in front of the building? in front of the building, so that handicap people don't have to travel a couple hundred feet?
Yes, you're required, the closest spaces to the building have to be accessible, and I think they recently changed the code, that it has to be within three spaces of the, the main door or something.
So you couldn't eliminate all those spaces in front?
You could, you could make a door in that. You can make an entrance in back.
You have to make a dedicated entrance.
But that's a redesign of the Dunkin' Donuts.
Um, Dunkin' Brands would never approve that.
So there has to be parking spaces so close to a door, and the door's in the front, so those parking spaces-
Yeah, I mean, it, look, if-
They don't have them in the front now.
If, um-
They don't? There's nothing there?
There's nothing there now.
A- and I'm just gonna use an example here, because it, it doesn't matter what, what Dunkin' Brands was to say, but if they were to look at this, they would want, they would encourage front parking spot just for on-the-go curb-side pickups. Like, you know how some of like the, like ninety-nines and the Unos, they all have like the curb-side? They would encourage that, so that they would wanna have that. But-
Yeah, they're about the same distance now, though, aren't they? They're right at the corner of the building, right when you're speaking.
Yeah, they're at the corner. Exactly.
They're right here, actually.
Yep.
Exactly. So, can we, can we follow up on, on, uh, everyone's thought? I mean, if, if you were to push that new building to the right just a little bit, to create that plaza, if you will, what, what would you have to do?
To, to touch on, to touch on that and the landscaping, what we could do, so, I, I believe Tony DiMartino did the site work in Westwood for that Islington location. So that location is very similar to this, obviously minus the Dunkin' Donuts, and it's twice the size of this proposed building. But what they did was they had pavers here, and then they built in, like, a bunch of landscaping in the pavers with steps. So, I mean, we could do something like that, to kinda make it more feel like, I guess, like a, like a plaza or something. But he, they, if you take a look-
Still looking.
They put a ton of, like, landscaping, like, built into, like, the steps, and it's really nice how, how they did it.
So the other thing to recognize is that all this beige area here is, is walkway under an overhang. So the, the second floor, the second and third floors, overhang in this area, and then this is just, this is just a roof overhang. So these, these areas here are all walkway areas that could be, and it'd make that, that walkway space much bigger than it might look on this plan.
All you're, all you're doing in it is walking.
Where are the dumpsters gonna be in the new building?
They're gonna, we're gonna add them in back here, in the back right.
In the shipping and receiving?
They would just use this area, like Dunkin' Donuts does now, right?
Do our codes call for a shipping line, specialty delivery?
Not for a building of this size. Dedicated loading area, loading space?
Yes.
I'd, no, for a building, for the retail component of this size, I don't believe the bylaw requires it.
We have one over on the corner of Woodman Street. I know that the, the owner there had to put in a special spot just for, uh, deliveries.
I could double-check the bylaw. My, my understanding was that it, below a certain size, that doesn't kick in.
His is smaller than this, this, this size, the size of this building.
I'll look again.
Regardless of where we put the buildings, uh, when, when we got three feet of snow, where do you put it?
That's a great question. So, right here, would be, one would be right here. So basically, we'll put, so similar to what we do at Dedham Street right now. So we, we're obviously limited to there, but we own the back lot, so we get a little creative with that location. But we would put it right here, back here. I mean, anywhere, basically where the landscaping is, you, you would basically, you wouldn't, obviously you wouldn't put the snow right here, 'cause you don't wanna be blocking people from leaving. So we would, we'd probably be putting it like, as much as possible in this area, maybe some here, back here. And I mean, our prior experiences, like, if we have, so what was it, three years ago that we got a hundred inches of snow? So, you know, every, every couple feet, we subcontracted out and got a, what do you call it, a Bobcat, and we had to clear it.
Yeah.
So, we're not gonna put customers or employees in a position where they can't see and it could cause an accident. So that's, that won't happen. So-
If you're still thinking about a restaurant, you're really, you know, you're gonna have trailers coming in and loading stock on a regular basis, right? Two or three times a week, yeah. Trailers like Cisco and trucks like that, and right here, there's no place for these people to stop and park.
There is right here.
Your Dunkin' delivery, they park on the side street, right when they deliver to you. If you have a restaurant, you're gonna have that compounded by five-tenfold because of all the, the supplies that are delivered to a restaurant business.
We also have this private way that we have access to, that they could park there, and they can kinda walk this way.
Leg it all across? Just doesn't seem, uh, the best setup, especially going uphill, right? There's a wall there.
Well, what, I'm sorry, we've talked so much. What's before, what's, what are we here to do tonight with this? Are we voting on it, or are we talking about it?
No, no, we're just, we're just talking about options and, and, uh-
Direction?
Yeah, give them some, some direction. Well, I, I don't see a good solution to, one of the things that's, that's, uh, not scratching my itch, which is the, the front, the parking in front. I just do not like that parking in front. I don't know any way around it, but I do not, whether, whether we do cut down three or four spaces as you suggest, or I just don't like it out there.
Again, the pro, basically, the only purpose for these is, these spots are already gonna be far enough away. I mean, I park on the grass every day, but that's just me. But some people, they may get irritated walking this far. So that's why we're requesting these spots, especially like mothers with kids, multiple kids, that they have, they can park close, run in, get an on-the-go order, say they leave their kid in the car. So that's a much better solution.
It's the reason for the split between the buildings. Exactly why. That's what we talked about when you were in here. That's the exact reason for that.
So the, John, the, uh, the question you asked me is five percent of the interior parking spaces should have landscaping, when it has more than twenty-five parking spaces? You asked about the-
So you're gonna have some interior landscaping between the parking spots. What about the
And then, and then the-
The loading area?
One loading, says, one loading space for each ten thousand square feet of gross floor area of any retail goods, wholesale storage, or distribution, manufacturing, consumer service establishment, hotel, motel, school, and the like. So one per ten thousand.
We need one loading spot dedicated. That's what I thought.
So that's a, so that's only if you're ten thousand or more, though, right?
No, there's one-
One loading space for each ten thousand.
Okay.
So one per ten. They have to have one.
Yeah, I mean, worst case, worst case scenario, we can, we can eliminate these and use this as a loading dock. Since our employees are already gonna be parking over here, over there, I mean, we can, we can make it work to accommodate that. That's not an issue.
Ju- just for comparison's sake, Dan, um, what are the number of parking spaces in each of these three proposals that-
Forty-four in the current proposal, forty-one in sketch A, and forty-two in sketch B. I might have those two backwards. No, that's it.
I can say to the board, we originally, and I think it got quickly shut down, we originally wanted to do underground parking as an option for this, but I don't think that bylaws allow that. I know that's what they have in the Islington location.
What do you mean, a one floor up?
Like a, like a little mini garage, yeah, with a gate, just for, just for employees of the retail and people that live here.
I'm not sure that that's disallowed.
Yeah? Not disallowed? Yeah.
I'm not sure that it's disallowed, where it's only a walk, it's nothing more than a walkout basement, so parking into there-
That-
The structure's altogether different than putting in two floors, so I'm not sure, Rich can check for you, but-
That, yeah, I, I remember we mentioned that to a couple people.
We had some talks years ago with fo- folks wanting to put in, uh, condo units with that same thing, the grade change and parking underneath.
So if we can, that's a game changer, if we can do that. That solves a lot of-
I'm guessing that-
I don't think you have enough grade change to do that, though.
They could make the grade change.
You're gonna, but you're gonna, you're gonna end up lifting the building.
You know what?
You're gonna end up lifting the building.
You'd have to move that big building down more towards the grade change, right?
You have to dedicate a whole area to getting in and out of that garage.
Well-
Park under the building or park underground? I didn't understand what you were saying. So the first floor is parking?
If you go back to your, uh, Westwood example, the building is elevated off of, uh, the street, and you drive down, and the park is underneath it, and they create a walkway that scissor backs to get up to it for handicap accessibility.
Yeah, it's great.
They have a, and then within the wall, and within the scissoring, going, the ramp going up, it's stone, and then they have landscaped beds within it, so it-
Yeah, I mean, it looks great. That's, that's kinda what I was trying to, that's what we were trying to do here, but I forget who we spoke to, but that, that, someone said, like, absolutely not, that that's not allowed. I don't even remember who we spoke to, but this, this was like, two years ago.
Do you have a sketch of that, uh, when you were talking about two years ago? Did you have a sketches?
No, no, this was just like-
Okay, alright.
Like, yeah, verbal, but-
Could you, maybe the thing could help us, you live in Westwood, right? Maybe you can take some, just some photographs, so that, 'cause I don't think, 'cause it's not on Google yet, I mean, the-
It's not on Google Earth yet.
Can I get back to the parking a little bit?
So does that raise the structure by another floor?
Because we're talking about a restaurant, but, you know, ten to twelve of those spaces are gonna be taken, ten to twelve of the forty-four are gonna be taken by residents. How many are for Dunkin' Donuts? It's gotta be at least ten or twelve.
Parking for employees.
So that, that leaves you twenty parking spaces for your retail.
You could put the residential parking under the building, though.
The, the, we wanna have a restaurant, so, 'cause the restaurant won't, won't take up spots in the morning, like, they'll open, say, for lunch, so then by that time, the Dunkin' spots will be, will be wide open. So that's kinda why, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't see that being an issue.
Counter-cyclical, is that what you're trying, trying to, yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, they're off-peak, you know?
Yeah.
I mean-
Yes, non-competing businesses.
Complimentary. Yeah, breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Yeah, I don't think it's, uh-
So the restaurant starts-
I mean, we could-
What's the address?
We could pop on- Google, 'cause-
I have one somewhere.
It's a-
Streetcar view. Drive down the road view.
That's if it's updated.
Yeah.
The location's relatively new.
I mean, I think if you saw the pictures and how they did it, how they come in, it's, it's not- The building sits on top of, uh, the parking. Ram down to it, and then-
Yeah, I'm looking at the footprint of the building and looking at the parking lot on the right, you could get, it looks like you get eight or ten parking spots under the basement of that building.
The grade change is only six feet. I mean, you're pushing your building up at least six feet into this, into the air, so it's-
I don't think you need twelve feet for underground parking.
By the time you get the structure and everything in there, maybe not.
Pretty tight, you have a good one.
Hey, you can see it on Google Earth, street view.
Can you?
Yep.
We'll put it on here.
I don't think that's gonna, I mean, I don't know what, I don't think that's gonna improve the situation. Still gotta get into it.
You know, make it more desirable for people that wanna, that wanna live there, though.
Just-
Obviously.
Just to show.
Especially they don't have to play out there, they don't have to dust up snow off their car when it sells.
Yep, especially when you climb down the ground. I'm familiar with this building, and it's, uh, it's very nice. No parking in the front.
That's right. Entrance is here, huh? For the basement?
Well, John, that's a point. So if theoretically, if you were to park under the building, then you wouldn't need to do the parking in the front. You could do it perhaps differently to-
Looks like the entrance is here.
Yeah?
Now you're at Universal Station.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
It's Washington Street? It's Washington Street, isn't it?
The underground parking would be specifically for the, for the, uh, for the-
Not the residents?
The residents, and for the employees.
Oh, yeah.
You mean, yeah.
It's at the other end, I think. Yep, you got it.
Is that across the street from Roach Brothers?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that one of the yellow buildings before that?
Yep.
Is that at the parking in the front before that, too, correct?
Yep.
Yes, you can see how they have, it's just a straight shot in, and they have, like, the landscaping in the front kinda built in.
Yep.
It's a beautiful-looking building. It's essentially the same thing we're trying to replicate, but just, this building's about twenty thousand square feet.
I think ours will be like that.
Oh, cool.
Double size.
Yours is, how many square feet?
Thirty-two.
Well, three on thirty, seven hundred on the ground or so, thirty-five hundred on the ground.
Three floors, though. I mean, almost that.
Do you know if that's entrance and exit through the sink?
Yep.
It is.
It is.
Well, that, that might, might be the answer. I don't know.
Depending on who we eventually get as a tenant, if, if we go forward with this plan, you know, that restaurant owner, it, it could predict, he could need a ton of parking spots. He could need, you know, all forty parking spots. And if we have underground parking, that solves a huge, you wouldn't want people parking in the MBTA lot. I mean, they're, I have a good relationship with MBTA, but they may not have a good relationship with someone's car parked in that lot, so.
Doesn't that break into your septic? Is that, you going down into-
It would be the former, say, the septic, not the existing.
No, but the existing. The one that you didn't wanna break, break into right now.
So we would build the new one, get that up and running?
And then you'd-
Eh, yes, and then put up like a, a construction fence and dig away.
And then it's gone. You don't need this anymore.
Yeah, the existing septic is here.
Yep.
And that, you can't build on top of it.
But he won't need it anymore.
So they would have to build this, connect it to-
Yeah, this here, right? You have the building, you bring it to the corner, you can drive in, you can, you can come off the side street and bring, and bring the grade, you know, so you would, see how this is here? I mean, you talked about the grade being channeled off of Main Street, but if it came off the side street, you could drive right in. And, again-
Yeah, that's true.
You could move-
You pick up six feet doing that.
I mean, great to get, do some design, but if you, if you brought this building to the co- to the street more, you could actually create a plaza area with table and kinda create more of a presence on this corner?
We'd lose septic capacity, though, right? Isn't that the whole, that's the biggest thing.
If you, so you push the building, we move it to the street.
The grade on the street, though, is, is higher at the front corner. You know, if you're trying to get into an underground garage, the back right corner is the spot to come off of a street to get into it. But, and, and, you know, John's been talking about the garage for a long time, but we never actually sat down and flushed it out. This building's not nearly as big as this building. So by the time you put, you know, a twenty-four-foot-wide in-out ramp down under the building, you're, you're eating up at least a third of the building. And, you know, I don't know how many spaces we're gonna get down there, but I know you love the idea.
I'd park down there for a while, okay, yeah. I mean, the parking, and then, your, your site, John, but you could, you could put parking on the, the park, underground parking on the, the surface parking if you needed.
I just think underground parking and/or garages is just so, if, if I'm looking to live somewhere, it's just much more desirable to have something like that.
Sure, I agree.
Yeah, no question.
I agree.
There's-
If you need to make your building bigger.
So I guess the issue, uh, the question about the septic system, you can't do, nothing Aaron was talking about earlier, do one system for the existing Dunkin' Donuts, and then do part of the system- Do one system for the existing Dunkin' Donuts and then do part of the system.
If that's something, but the Dunkin' Donuts was in great shape, I would say, yes, we should do that, um, however, having two people look at it, it's, you know, it's.
Well, not, I mean, actually replace the one that's there, so build the capacity, or build the new syst- pa- I guess it's two systems, I guess, that then connect together. One for Dunkin' Donuts and then another one for the new building on the site, you know what I mean, build, so that way you could give yourself a little more real estate on the site. I don't know if it's possible, it makes sense, but I mean.
Well, anything's possible, it's just, there's, there'll be a much more disruption to the business, I mean, you gotta get, so there's, there's permits, there's, there's fences, there's, there's digging, there's, you know, the town engineer coming out inspecting everything, it, it's a lot, it's, it'll be a huge disruption. Whereas the other one, just on the plot, property we have right now, they can come out, the town can come out as many times as they wanna looking at it, cause it's not interfering with the rest of the, with the rest of the operation, and there's minimal downside.
No, I know.
If we were building this property from scratch, then yes, that's, that idea would be, would probably work.
Yeah, no, I know you're not, so it's.
I know, it's tough, I've, I've looked at every angle, it's just.
Well, are you willing to take a crack at, uh, an underground, uh, if, if Rich can confirm what we believe is correct, that it is allowed, are you willing to take a crack at, uh, look at it, the design for an underground?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna touch your architect about the tiny spaces, can we pick them up?
So I, I, I. I may take a ride tomorrow, just take a ride, but I think they have, I wanna say twelve spots under there, I'm not a hundred percent sure though, but, I mean, all we need is like six to eight.
Yeah, yeah.
You could talk to Mike McKay, he's the one that designed it.
Yeah, they done it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, uh, uh, that would, that would, um, in, in my judgment, eliminate the need for the parking in the front, that's the purpose of this.
No.
Forget it then.
He wants the parking in front for Dunkin' Donuts.
I know he wants, but I, I, I don't want parking in front.
One last shot.
Could eliminate the spots that he had recommended.
You said you were gonna stop talking about.
Yeah, everybody kept talking, I thought we were gonna try and end the conversation.
Keep going, keep going, cause these ideas will perk up, something will happen.
Again, I'm trying to figure out how to make the space at the building more pre-season friendly. So if you took this building and you slid it up, basically as far up and right as you could, and you, and you took what was left of this space and you landscaped it and such as a plaza that could be used between the two, so that maybe what you had out here was some sort of like a, you know, a low planting grass buffer or something, right, so you could, you could potentially sit here and have a cup of coffee without feeling like you're sitting in a parking lot. You know, maybe that five feet, you know, and that five feet starts to make those two spaces usable.
Yeah.
What do you think, John?
Might as well look into it. So we think it's allowed?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'm gonna, I don't see any reason, I, I'm gonna look, I'll, let me see why.
It's no different than an underground two-car garage.
Yeah, I don't know why.
So if we did an underground gar- So if we shifted this a little bit over, put some landscaping. So if we had like the entrance to go into the garage and we, maybe say we got rid of a spot or two, can we still keep some of these here, just for people for Dunkin'?
And made it smaller?
I know it's not, I, I know, so I know like, it may be unsightly, however, I'm looking more for the safety of my customers and for their, like, to make their lives easier.
I think you, one of the things maybe you could consider, you know, is not only landscaping, maybe you put some stone wa- to, to hide the park, and the idea is to try to, I mean.
Like a stone wall?
But, I mean, just talk that through though a little bit, you could close down for that extra two weeks to put the septic in the middle to improve the safety for your customers for the next ten years.
You're talking right here?
Which is the third option, right?
That's all I guess I'm just saying, if it, I mean, if.
Yeah, I agree, I understand.
The safety of the customers is really the main, main driver, then maybe losing business for an extra two weeks is worth that safety. I don't, I'm not a business person, so I don't know the answer to that question.
I can say, the reason why we're going, so the reason why we wanna do, we wanna, we wanna do this, like a, how big's this building then, thirty?
Like, on the ground, it's like thirty-five.
Yeah, so the reason why we're looking to do thirty-five hundred square feet is because we'd like to get, we'd like to get a restaurant caliber, so someone like, I don't know, I'm just gonna throw out names like, like I, Cafe Sisi, like a, like a Chiara in Westwood, that type of restaurant. If we do something like that, which I, and I only bring this up because several customers have actually brought up that idea, that they would love to have something over here. That's why we went to Dan and kinda tried to propose this, if we go with Plan Three and did the septic here and this here, the building would be significantly smaller and it just, it, it just won't work with the, with the septic capacity, so unless there's another way we can tie into the, to the pipe that leads up to Town Hall, then to get on sewer, just, it's not gonna work.
Did you know the Cafe Sisi has tables out front for dining?
I do, yeah.
It's also tiny.
Did you talk with Derek?
Uh, briefly.
What's stopping us from tying into the sewer?
Uh, that's a great question.
Yeah, so, at least the conversation, I did talk to Bob this afternoon after, what, and I don't know if this is not possible, but he said some of the capacity has been, uh, reserved.
Yeah, that's the good response. I, I just think it's a, so I just think it's a no-brainer for all the business and people, for everyone to do it, it's just a no-brainer.
Well, in terms of restaurant, absolutely.
Absolutely.
But.
But I think if, I think that if we, and we haven't got there, if we could find out if we have additional, you know, expansion capacity there, then it definitely makes sense.
It was supposed to work on that years ago.
And that.
Because that field also, if the capacity is full, that field has room to expand also.
Yeah, it does.
If everybody was to have the center of town, I'll tie into that.
Right.
Yep.
I think it's definitely worth looking into.
But, look, what, whatever you do, you gotta get rid of those parking spaces in the front, you gotta get rid of them, it's just, well, if you want my vote, you gotta get rid of those parking spaces in front. You gotta do something. I don't like them.
You don't like the street view of them?
I don't like the street view of them, right? I just don't.
Again, some of our adjacent neighbors have.
History, it's grandfathered, it's ancient history, I mean, I understand.
Were you the one that asked to be put into this B-one core district?
What's that?
Were you the one that wanted to be put into this B-one core district?
I was, we were outside, I don't know why we were outside.
Yeah.
But I did get back, we got inside, it was good.
Okay, so you're inside, so now you get the rules of the inside core of V-one.
Our goal at the end of the day is like, we wanna make, we wanna make the site as desirable as possible to the entire community, I mean, obviously there's beautiful houses up here by Kinney Pond, there's, you know, the, the forty-B that just went in, we wanna have people walking to our location, especially if there's a restaurant, especially if there's, you know, people living there, you know, we wanna make it a destination, not just like, oh, hi, there's, there's a restaurant, there's a Dunkin', so we wanna make it like a destination, kinda like we made our Dedham Street location, we made it a destination. Gas, Subway, Dunkin', convenience, so.
I think we all probably agree with those goals.
Yeah, we do, we do, we do. But, you know, the, the idea that.
A little more work, just.
The idea that Rich came up with in terms of tying into the, to the town center sewer, I mean, that, that.
That's a very distinct possibility.
It, it's, it's a lot of piping and there's, there's a collection and pumping station required and, and, uh.
That's not a cheap system.
No, they're not cheap, I understand, and you gotta go, you know, dig up lots.
This, this system is a hundred and fifty grand. I mean, I know, a hundred and fifty grand, just.
Yeah, yeah, sure, right.
I mean, I know our, our Dedham Street was, was like a hundred, and this one's bigger, so.
It's been tarrelling downtown for a long time.
Well, no, I just got the voice message from Bob, so I mean, um, certainly like to sit down a little bit more and kinda, no pun intended, flush this out a little bit with the sewer.
Nice.
Very good.
And the underground parking.
Wish this were easier, cause I really wanna see what you wanna get done, get done, but it is an easy.
And when and if we get approved, we will, we'll move faster, just like with our driveway, we kind of, you know.
So Dan, I guess theoretically, if you were to tie in the sewer and you had underground parking, could you get rid of the, design the site to get rid of the parking in front?
Absolutely. Consider it all landscape.
Okay.
That's a trick question, I know that answer.
The sewer changes everything. In that location, Westwood's all sewer, that's.
Yeah, no, I.
Sure, sure. Right.
Yeah.
I think we knew we need to see this, talk this through sewer issue, have to see what, I mean, everybody's got this reserve capacity, but nobody's done anything with it necessarily yet, so.
You have to figure out how the line would get from here to up there.
Well, it's a pressure system, right, so.
Yeah, you could do a low pressure system.
Okay, so what are the takeaways then? So we're gonna find out what it would take to tie into Town Sewer, that's our first variable, right? Our second variable is the possibility of including underground parking.
Underground parking, right, yeah.
So let's just say worst-case scenario, not possible, not possible, what's our third option?
We're back to square one.
Yes.
I got another crazy idea, you guys keep making, let me think.
Oh, my. If we can get, if, if we can get Town Sewer to happen, then you guys can, you guys can pick where you want the building.
Well, I mean, let me throw this out there too, cause I'm, I'm on to crazy ideas now, I mean, if, really the tail wagging the dog in this whole situation is, is the existing site at Dunkin' Donuts. So you're redoing it anyway, what if you built a new Dunkin' Donuts on the right-hand side of the site? When that was open, you demoed the existing Dunkin' Donuts and you put your building where the existing Dunkin' Donuts is.
Cost.
I just heard a huge gasp.
And, and.
Cost, yeah.
Cost, and Dunkin', the, the franchise, Zora, will not want us to be closed for three, four months to do something like that, if we don't have to contractually remodel, so we have to contractually remodel every ten years.
You wouldn't be closed, I mean, I'm sure cost is an issue, but you could, you could stagger it so you wouldn't be closed.
Yeah.
And you build a new one, you get it operational, you close the old one, move on, what you're, the only thing you're losing from what I heard is the shell of the existing, you're rebuilding the shell of the existing.
What does that accomplish, just out of curiosity?
It allows you to re, it allows you to put the buildings wherever you want them, instead of, the, this entire site is being forced by the location of existing Dunkin' Donuts and the lack of access Plan North and Plan, Plan Top and Plan Right. If you change those parameters and you, you relocate the Dunkin' Donuts, it allows you to rethink all of this.
Yeah, I mean, when we bought this property, it was back in ninety-three, if, if, the Dunkin' ideal should be like right here, and then you can have like parking here, here, like everywhere, that, that's the ideal spot, but to, to build something else, there's gonna be a cost, then we have to justify to Dunkin' Brands as to why we spent this cost, let's say we failed and they took over ownership, then they would wanna know, like, why did you go this route, where, where's the return on investment, so there'd be a lot of questions we'd have to answer, which I just don't think it makes sense.
So John, if, if you did, Aaron's a little out there idea, so, if you, if you put the, um, the Dunkin' in the new building and then the restaurant gets in the new building and then you do, you know, incorporate them together into the new building. Get yourself, again, the idea would be septic system field to get.
Do you need a freestanding building for Dunkin' Donuts? Do you need a freestanding building for Dunkin' Donuts?
For next gen, I think.
For next gen, you do, so that.
Next gen, you do.
So our family, we own the property, the brand can say like X, Y, Z, like they can control so much, they, they would frown upon, like, so what we have at Dedham Street, they frown upon that, because it's not ideal, it's not ideal to a Dunkin', they want a more freestanding building to separate itself from the rest of the plaza.
I understand, yeah.
Really?
I'm just, I think, I think you should, for the cost of the shell of the building, it, it really, it allows you to do what you wanna do with this site.
Are you changing the, the guts inside the building too, John, you're changing everything but the exterior walls?
Yep.
Which are blocks, right?
Yep.
It's certainly something to think about, boy, if you talk about amortizing this over thirty years, the cost of blocking this thing and having the project designed just like you want.
We still got Dunkin' Donuts in the building.
The goal, the goal is really to have a destination restaurant there, you gotta hit it out of the park with this, cause it's gonna be the only one in town. But it's gotta be a place that people are gonna wanna go, not only drive to, but walk to from the train to grab a beer or whatever. And if you can, if you can take advantage of being able to move it front, lower-left corner of that site, and.
So where are you suggesting this to go?
On the right-hand side.
Here?
Yeah.
And what about the drive-thru?
Sure, we could figure it out.
If, if sewer is available, and it's, it's a big if at this point, but if, the building, the, the restaurant can be larger, right?
Sure.
Big brains working tonight, but, I mean, if you put, if you put the Dunkin' Donuts here, or over here, and the drive-thru, the drive-thru access was here, right, so you, you're still, traffic pattern's still the same way. It's just your, your, all your transactions are happening here, and then you take this building and you put it up here.
Can you do it from the other side now?
And then you've got, you could potentially pre-season this entire facade and all of your parking is in that.
If you ever decided to do that, John, obviously you'd have the opportunity to work on a clean slate.
It's not a bad idea, I, I just think you'd have a lot of, you'd have a lot of parking issues while the construction was underway, that, that, that would be a problem, with the, the parking. Like, where would people park? That's the only problem. And the, the MBTA, I mean, even though I have a good relationship with them, they're, they'll let me park there every day, but will they let my customers? Probably not.
I guess that depends where the building ends up being located, yeah.
Are your employees parking on the lot now?
Find a way to find parking.
No, they, they don't park.
Only if I, only if I email the gentleman that I know and I, I get permission.
On your, no, and where they park now, your employees?
In the back.
On the back? Oh. So if you were able to temporarily have them park off-site, not on the MBTA, but a different location. In the church across the street?
At Town Hall, when a shuttle provided?
The church across the street.
Town Hall's not a bad walk, I walked it today.
Oh, I, I. I, I'm just trying to get employees to show up to work, I think, it's, it's, it's a, it's a tough idea. Well, I mean, the church could, I suppose.
There's a church across the street that rents parking spaces.
Yep.
That church?
That's a challenge, Derek. The park over there?
Well, you, you, you've certainly heard enough different ideas tonight, uh.
What do you think I would answer on the sewer? Just as an expectation, so.
Well, I'll talk to him, hopefully, I could talk to him tomorrow, let's see.
Talk to him tomorrow and see what, uh.
How, how soon, like, would that hap- so let's say, like, yes, it's a go, how soon would? How, how soon would, like, would that hap-? So let's say, like, yes, it's a go, how soon would, would that happen?
Can't get, I can't give you an answer tonight, but I mean, yeah.
Hypothetically.
They have to do a pro forma of the proposed units that are left to go into that, uh, that area. Right now, there's a proposed, uh, whatever, mixed use, there's a supermarket, and what we talked about, this is probably five years ago, they're afraid that they have to offer sewers to everybody in that, in that area there, that downtown area. If there's excess capacity, then they're allowed to use it wherever they want, which is why they sold it to the town. If they did a proposed build-out of what was going in there, and the problem is they don't know exactly what's going in there, because units, residential take more than retail. If they knew that, then they could, and Kevin's on the board of selectmen, they could make the decision to go forward and let you put something in there and take capacity. The problem they would have is if their calculations are wrong and this rest of the center of town ever got built out, they'd be responsible to provide them with extra, obviously, capacity to their business. It's not a dead end, from what I understand, because the field that's not there now can be expanded to have larger capacity.
I, I just think, I can't speak for any of my adjacent neighbors or any of the neighbor, or people that own properties, I just think this is a no-brainer, for all of them.
Mr. Rogeri across the way, who owns the, the white building that Linda's Variety is in, he came to the town three years ago. We'd set up a meeting with the other planner, Ray, before you, and he was willing to change the facade of his building to anything the town wanted, because that sewer connection would give him, I believe it was six extra residential units, which is allowed by zoning. So the whole thing was hinged on, how much capacity is there and do, does the board want to take a chance and let somebody connect in, not knowing what's going in there. And of course, the irony is the extra lots have sat there for a number of years now. So that's, so it ties up future connections, because the extra lots are sitting there.
And I just think, like, if, if this, like, becomes a fruition, then, you know, that economic master development video that the town has with all these, like, apartments and going up on the, that would happen and the town would look great. It already looks great, but just imagine, like, how nice it would look.
The mortuary, when the ro, the road paving, the five years is done, so they can dig it up and the, the gas line from Columbia is right there at the intersection. Actually, Ray Rogeri paid to bring that up to Norfolk House of Pizza for his oven, so the gas line is run there right now. So the theory is that was gonna run right through to the bridge, because you can't have a restaurant without, without gas.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But right now, the corner lots on the corner of Liberty Lane and, uh, Main Street, they, uh, have a gas connection, because they can run it perpendicular rate from, uh, the island there in the center right over. So he was told he would have gas, but the fumble line has not been running down Main Street. But that was the whole overall plan that, you know, Rich, I think, might be working on now, some of it, along with drainage too. Maybe this could be the impetus to have, move forward and take a chance and let somebody connect, as long as you know that the septic system, the field, is able to support X amount of gallons, and all you'd have to do is a minimum coverage is to make sure the field would support the gallonage that Dunkin' Donuts is gonna need with this new building. So if you know the field has the capacity to enlarge that size, then they're covered no matter what goes into the, the, the core district, because the same capacity is gonna remain. So that's something.
But it comes down to how you fund the expansion of the sewer field.
Yeah, but that's a good problem to have.
Well, a lot of times, the whole.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, is you gotta, you gotta figure out how, how to have a business development zone in the center of town that you're trying to develop, fund future development.
Well, there is a mechanism, because all the folks, like, if, if Dunkin' Donuts connected, they'd be paying fees. They've established fees now that are minimum, and the, the theory was all the new connections were to pay for the operations of that, of that septic system.
Run some math and make that happen.
Right, right, because right now, it's a going entity where the people that are connected there, all the people that own lots that have nothing, are still paying, I believe they're up to date, are still paying their fees for that system to run.
Close, up to date.
Yes. As close as you can.
Let's look into that, Rich. We gotta, we gotta break this bottleneck somewhere.
That would really be a, a nice start to, because when.
If we're that close, it would be a shame to put a compromise like this in, when you could do so much better.
When the voters voted to take over that septic field, it was brought up, and the reason that, that made the vote swing was because it was not because the town wanted to, to control that by itself. The theory was to provide wastewater for all of the B-one core district. And we even talked about each unit across the way having their own pumps, that we're gonna pump it across the street, because across from Walgreens, there's a pumping station there that pumps it up the hill, so we're gonna be like secondary pumps along the people that decided to connect on, which is what, which is what they would have, yeah. So that was the whole plan from before, but it never got on, uh, it never got on track.
Guys gotta hire a lobbyist for the sewer system.
Okay, so Rich, you're, you're gonna.
Yes.
Dig into that one, right? And, uh, while, while he's digging into that, you're gonna look at the possibility of a ramp for underground, underground parking? Okay.
Sorry.
I don't know what else we've got. Roughly, what is it, October twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth. When is it?
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Motion to continue.
What's the next meeting, Betsy? Is it the twenty-fourth? Motion to continue the, uh, site plan review hearing for one thirty-four Main Street until October twenty-fourth at seven o'clock PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a unanimous vote.
I know it sometimes gets lost in the conversation of the back and forth and the ideas, but I think everybody's pretty excited about the potential of something like this, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I remember, I, I think it was when, when Ray was there, I asked, I go, someone told me that there was a sewer, like a sewer connection somewhere, and I go, wow, why can, why can all the businesses connect? Like, what's, why wouldn't everyone that owns property, why wouldn't they want to connect that?
You would, you would, of course, of course. You would.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, after sewer system that's just, can't handle it.
Motion to adjourn.
We can't consider handcuff ourselves because of a commitment that we made to an open field that's sitting away, holding back development.
So John's comment was, as long as you can expand the field for the amount of usage that Dunkin' Donuts requires, it shouldn't be a problem tying into it.
And that only becomes a problem if we have somebody come in and say, oh, you know what?
Irritable capacity. Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, nice problem to have.
Uh, should we adjourn?
No, uh, let's see, with the next item, uh, business was Three David Road, they requested continuance, and then, uh, the next item was Cranberry Heights, which we got an email from them moments before the, uh, meeting to continue that to the next meeting. So that takes care of that. Ninety-six Pond Street Site Plan Review, endorse.
We need to make motions to, to continue.
So I'll, I'll move to continue the public hearing for Three David Road Site Plan until October twenty-fourth at seven-ten PM.
Second.
Sorry, sorry about that. So Three David Road, this is the first hearing, so if you want to, you'd open the hearing, which we're a little late, but, um, this is the first hearing.
I thought we had already opened it. No, we didn't, we didn't open it? Well, we don't need to open it, do we?
Right, that's what I think.
Yeah, but we just want to.
Oh, my apologies.
All right, so we, we do need to. All right, so the motion is made to continue until October twenty-fourth at seven-fif, seven-ten, okay? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Move to continue the. Cranberry Heights. Cranberry Heights definitive open space subdivision plan to October twenty-fourth at seven-twenty PM. Do we have it? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
That didn't look familiar. I knew we didn't do that one yet.
You're right.
Yeah.
No, Three David Road is the initial hearing, so you should probably, uh, probably open it.
It's too late.
Why do we need to open it if it's an initial hearing? We can wait till the next meeting to open it, can't we?
Well, you need to open it and then vote to continue to a date and time certain, you just.
I, I don't understand that. Why can't we just not open it at all and open it for the first time at the next meeting?
Because it was published and advertised for this day.
All right, that's why, okay, that's the reason. I'm gonna retract my motion to continue Free David Road. All right, so. I retracted my motion. Yes, you did. Now would you like to make a new motion, sir? We have to vote on the motion first to retract it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, sir, your new motion. You can open the meeting now. Well, if I'm gonna open the meeting, I need, uh, the secretary to read the, uh, public notice, you know, the record.
Can we motion to delay the opening to next meeting?
Pardon me?
Can we motion to delay the opening to next meeting?
No, we can't. So where's the public, she's going to get it, all right. And then Aaron can, can.
Please stand by.
Read it in.
We're gonna start everything over again. Motion to start over.
I certainly hope you'll be an advocate at the Board of Selecter meeting to support the.
Well, the way that John just kind of threw me out there at the front of the truck, I don't know how I can be.
Just need to get that Board of Selecter.
Yeah, wish we had somebody who could do that.
Good job, John. It's actually kind of a, I don't think it's a big deal, they just never did the math, so they made the decision to move forward, let people connect.
Do you, do you work for Dunkin' Donuts?
I, I'm a contractor that works for Dunkin' Donuts, yeah. My company does work with them.
Kind of conflict of interest. Um, not yet.
All right, sir.
I like my signature.
Get the microphone close.
Do I just read the notice? Uh, notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass GL Section forty-eight in the Norfolk zoning bylaw, Section F-eleven. A public hearing will be held on Wednesday, September nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven-ten PM in room one-twenty-four at the Norfolk Town Hall. One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, regarding a site plan application for property located at Three David Road in Norfolk, Massachusetts. The applicant, DMO Realty LLC of Seconk, Massachusetts, is proposing construction of a seven thousand five hundred square foot commercial service contractor's headquarters with associated parking utilities, drainage, septic, and grading as depicted on provided plans. The property is located in the C-one on a highway zoning district. Reference assessor's map nineteen, block seventy-two, lot fifty. The plan and application are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during the hours of nine AM to six PM, Monday through Thursday.
John?
All right. So I have to make a motion to continue? No, I have to open the, open the public hearing, yeah, all right. So the, the, uh, public hearing for, for the Three David Road is hereby open. We have received a request to, uh, continue this public hearing until the next meeting, so I need a motion to continue till the next meeting. Motion to continue the public hearing for Three David Road Site Plan to October twenty-fourth at seven-twenty PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is done. Thank you. Okay, Bets, Ninety-six Pond Street, uh, we need to endorse on the way out. Yeah, okay. All right, Rich, it's, it's, uh, you're up, Fox Run subdivision, et cetera, et cetera.
Do you hear for any particular?
I am for the, um, uh, Six Hill Street.
That was, that was zoning board, they were downstairs.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and they're, they've already gone, I think that, that was.
Did they go? No, you don't know what they got.
I believe that was continued, um, to another meeting.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, December fifth.
Oh, the poor folks. Betsy was nice enough to spot a few people from Cranberry Heights, they'll let them know that.
Oh, good, so, yeah, sorry, okay.
All right, sir, anyway.
Yeah, as far, a quick run on relative to Fox Run, it's, uh, last week in September, they had discussed paving in September. Sent out an email to, uh, John Engdahl from Pulte Homes to get an update today. I know we read it at least, so I'm waiting for a response back, um, to get an updated schedule to when they're, uh, gonna finish out. We need to get moving on paving, because the structures are all raised, and it's, it's a hazard in the road, I mean. We don't want to repeat other subdivisions where the structures are raised and they're there for a long period of time, so I'll, I've asked them for, uh, an update, and I'll follow up with a phone call if we don't know within the next couple of days.
Thank you.
And then, so that's essentially the update for, uh, for that.
All right.
Topic. Town Center Grant, since we spent a lot of time on, uh, on one thirty-four Main Street, what I was gonna do, and we know necessarily do it tonight, is I emailed the board members two design guidelines that were prepared by, uh, MAPC for, uh, Town of Marlborough and the Town of Rentham, just to take a look and see, one of the, one of the deliverables and the grant with MAPC, design guidelines from the B-one zoning district. So I wanted you to just take a look and let me know your feedback on those, and see if it's within the range of expectations. If you didn't have an expectation, that's okay too, but.
I suggest that you also send those to the designer review board, because I think we need their input as well.
It's already been sent to them.
Good.
I'm waiting to hear back.
Wasn't distributed amongst the board members.
You, you didn't get a, you should've got an email directly from me.
From the planning board.
You can get it from the, all right, well, individually send it to all the designer review board members.
Yep.
And then maybe, what might not be a bad idea is maybe we kind of have them invite them to a plan where me and some both could be together, kind of discuss it.
Yep.
I know we got it.
I'm sorry, I may have, I may have received it thinking it was planned for you now, just, you might want to check.
I'll check, see. Um, but regardless, I haven't heard back from any DRB members yet, so perhaps we might want to consider, just in the general world, to have a special meeting, just to kind of talk about that topic alone relatively soon, uh, if we could. And then I'll leave it at that for now. Um, and then Complete Streets, not much more of an update, except for, uh, we're gonna be printing up large-scale maps that we're gonna place, I'm gonna place them at the library in the senior center for those that want to handwrite comments on the map. Right now, there's the Wiki map that's on the website.
It's got a lot of points on it. Might just be two people putting seventy-five points, but it's got a lot of points on it.
It's got points, so that's good. Uh, for those that, and I did get a couple of phone calls from people that were looking for, uh, you know, if there was a hard copy. So I'm gonna print that out, bring it over to the library, and people, uh, will be able to go to the library. And what we'll do is we'll just put something on the, on the town website to let them know that it's available for viewing. The plan right now is actually continuing to leave it up, and then we're gonna have a community meeting in the beginning of December, that's kind of the tentative target timeframe. And that map will still remain up, the Wiki map, even after the meeting, because that way, potentially, people might come to the meeting, they didn't know about the map, they could still go back in afterwards and, and get some feedback on it. And then the, uh, the last item, which I do want to talk about, was I sent you an email with, um, but a proposed zoning change to, uh, the Site Plan Approval Bylaw regarding the F-eleven A. I know you got some correspondence, um, from the Zoning Board of Appeals, which was referenced in that four to Six Hill Street, and, uh, so what, and we could talk about this, is, uh, what's in there right now is essentially taking the building commissioner from making determinations, whether an applicant needs to go through the site plan. from making determinations, whether an applicant needs to go through the site plan approval process. And we're, and putting in, in the planning board would be who people would have to report, you know, essentially apply to for determination. So that's, and I'll just, in a little pause a moment. The other change I did in there propose, which since we're, uh, we're working towards doing online permitting. I did put in the change to delete the reference as far as how many applic- applications people need to apply. And what we're gonna do is, it, the change in there is to then refer to the site plan regulations for how much, how many plans people need and materials they need to, to change, uh, to submit. So what we'll do is we're gonna be starting shortly, um, do with the online permitting, and then we can at least clean it out of the zoning, update the regs, and then we'll all be on one page. But the overall idea is obviously reduce the amount of paper that we get. So that's in there, in that proposed change that I sent you, just so you.
It sounded like we were making the copies, though?
Uh, no, no, applicant.
The applicant's still making, cause you crossed out, is that, if I'm recalling correct, you crossed out the part where they were providing fifteen copies? It's alright, I might've read it wrong.
Yeah, it's still on the onuses on the applicant.
Okay.
It's not. Any person's, uh, so it was just under, uh, any person's design approval of a site plan under the section shall submit. I just struck that out and then put in.
Okay.
In accordance with the planning board rules and regulations for a site plan as most recently amended.
I think you were saying too that it gave more control to the process, because, and I didn't hear you mention that just now, but I thought your letter said that there's more control because now the planning board, uh, people would come back to the planning board if something changed, whereas before they wouldn't be coming back.
That, that relates more to, we could talk about now, the whole F eleven A process. So, right now, the, what happens is somebody's looking to, uh, deter, you know, get a determination whether or not they need to go through site plan approval through the planning board. They apply to the building commissioner, and then the building commissioner makes a finding and lets them know whether required is, requires that or not. The issues come up relative to the, uh, four to Six Hill Street where there's a new business in there. An F eleven A was issued earlier this year, um, where it.
Nobody knew about it.
Where he made a determination that site plan approval, uh, was not required. But also as part of that process, there was no, there's not, it doesn't get filed with the town clerk. It doesn't get distributed to the planning board, so it's, it's a decision that gets made, but there's really no awareness at large to anybody. Because it's just done with an applicant. They apply, determination is made. So, the, uh, the thought being that there should be a different process in place.
Should that be a different process or a different education for building commissioner?
The planning board should be the one that decides whether somebody needs site plan approval or not, not, not the building commissioner or the planning. We had a lot of changes about this, taking things from the ZVA to the planning board, because that was the board that was more apt to handle some of these, uh, special permits. We've changed probably ten of those different permits over the, probably over seven or eight years ago. So in this thing here, if somebody comes with a business and the building inspector decides that, well, they don't need a special permit for whatever reason or criteria he goes from, then they don't file with us, and in many cases, the planning board may feel that he really should file the site plan. And the Four Hill Street ended up being a business that some would consider very different than electric, uh, lighting that was in there before. And this is a snow removal company with salts and sands and gotta submit to a landscaper. It's kind of interesting, they, uh, Rich and I met with the applicant and his attorney and Chris Weider. And I, they agreed to not hold the town. First, they wanted to go through site plan, but saying we've got the letter from the commissioner, so if we don't like what the planning board decides for, on the site plan, we're just gonna use it. So we did convince them that, I personally wasn't gonna go through just a procedure and have them just do whatever they want. So they did acquiesce. We have a letter on file, but it just brought the point up that, geez, if, if a business is coming in town, really the planning board's the best one to decide whether they need site plan. And in this particular matter, one of the, one of the two criteria for the building inspector to waive that is that the previous business that was in there was similar, and they already had gone through site plan approval. Well, lo and behold, Island Lighting, who was in there previously, who sold it, never had site plan approval.
And they weren't similar.
So, and they weren't similar, which is more subjective, but basically if there's no site plan approval.
That's not a breakdown in the process.
I think that's, right. I think the theory would be if somebody went through a site plan approval, and now they left and a new business came in, almost similar, we don't wanna waste their money or their time in going through a process with the same business, so. But I still thought that that should be a planning board decision rather than the building commissioner.
So it's a, right. So there's a couple of things that, so we, you know, what you, what you have is really a, a very basic change potentially, which changes is from the building commissioner to the planning board.
Right.
There is kind of, I would call it the third option, which is kind of a blended thing that, um, you could have, which isn't written in the language, which we would have to make some changes to, where the commissioner still could make a determination, but it gets sent to the planning board, and then it gets filed with the clerk, so at least there's.
It sounds to me like the process is, the way it is written is fine. The problem is with the example being given is the process wasn't followed, right? The, the, the exceptions that you, that require reporting to the planning board.
Well, it doesn't right now.
Weren't followed.
No.
So it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily an error in the process. It was an error in the execution of, of the process.
Well, no, no. Let me just, uh, clarify. The, right now, there is no, the way the bylaws written now, the decision gets made by the commissioner.
That's, that's, the point of that is, is to avoid the extended process of the planning board in simple decisions, which I don't think we should, I don't think we should lightly take that level of ease out of the process and make everything be reviewed by the planning board.
The difference in the process that I believe, and I suggested that, the commissioner isn't the one, the tools to look at a business and decide whether it should go through site plan based on, on the type of business and where it's located. I think the planning board, who has the professionals that do this, I think this should be done by an elected board and not by a town official. So I think that things, calls like that are better made by a board that does that as compared to, uh, the commissioner. And, uh, when we change that, that district there to make it combined commercial and residential.
Residential, yeah.
It becomes much more murky. So now you're, you're, you're mixing businesses in a residential area. So I think that the, the need for site plan myself is more important because, you know, you got folks that wanna park piles of salt in, in a side yard of a residential neighborhood.
With a couple hundred feet of a well.
Or park heavy equipment in the backyard with viewing from, from people in their homes. I think that.
But we, but we as a planning board could educate our building commissioner that we are interested in borderline situations, so you shouldn't, you know, when in doubt, defer the applicant to the planning board.
I disagree. I disagree fully. I don't think it should even go to his office. I think the jurisdiction should be with the elected board, the planning board. He's got enough with zoning enforcement. He can make decisions at zoning, but should he file with this board or not? No different than we said, should someone go to the building inspector or not? We don't say that. I think that totally belongs at this board here.
It just seems odd for the board to be deciding whether someone should file with it or not.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, no. If you look at the regulations, we have a format where people come in here informally, and they sit down and tell us what they're gonna do, and we give them decis- suggestions like these folks are doing, although.
Two hours.
Right. On how to go and whether they need to file. So that's done right now as a matter of process. So they're not circumventing anything, and they're getting direction on how to file. This thing takes it out of our hands totally, so we never have the opinion to decide whether this thing needs a site plan or review or what.
John, in the event that we had, or I'm not saying we as an organization, but theoretically, if a municipality had a building commissioner that you felt was able to make these determinations consistently in a manner that was reflective of what the planning board's expectations were, would you agree that that process is more streamlined than having to wait for the queue of getting in front of the planning board once a month to be able to have these things be done?
It's more streamlined, but I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the, uh, I don't think it's the background of the zoning officer to decide whether a project should have contingencies on it and conditions in a format. I think it's the job of us. We're the elected board. We're the ones that really in charge of planning what goes into neighborhoods, so I don't think it's a matter of, I think Bob Bullock personally is a very good commissioner, very bright man, known zoning for twenty years here. But I just think that judgment calls like that should be made by us with a trained planner and a board that's elected by the people that'll decide if this business is going next for a bunch of residential homes, we think that it fits. And if not, we put conditions on that. And that's caused the mess on this, is it Four Hill Street?
Four and Six Hill Street.
Right. And when you look and start to question on the detail of these operations, there's a lot of things to me that make no sense. Like twenty-five parking spots in the back, and then come to find out they're gonna be storing outside heavy equipment.
Right.
That's never used except for four months during the year. I don't understand how twenty pieces of heavy equipment sits around at the cost of every equipment. I don't understand how there's an extra twenty-five parking spots wanting a residential land that was never given a special permit for or waiver. So, I mean, the whole thing, to me, warrants review because there's a lot of unknowns there. And again, you're working right in the residential district. So when they, like I said, when the town decided they want residential there in a commercial area, I, I think that it just is more important than the B one district or another zone where it's all one type of business, personally.
Plus, our meetings are audio and videotaped, and like all of that stuff is a matter of record, as opposed to just going up to the desk over there, having a conversation, filling out some forms, who knows?
That's what happened. Some of the neighbors decided that they didn't think that was proper, it should go through review. So they went to appeal, and the appeal period, I believe, is at thirty days.
Yeah, so in this particular case, it's thirty days, but you don't.
Appeal period gone by four months ago.
You don't even.
We don't know when the clock starts ticking.
You wouldn't know. You wouldn't know.
No, but when you have an appeal, there's a stamp by the town clerk to stop the clock ticking, like in one of our decisions. In this case, there was no actual, when was the date that the appeal period started? We don't know. Cause we were never notified of that, number one, nor were the neighbors, so if it's from the signing of the letter that was never forwarded, how is it about, excuse me, supposed to have the chance to appeal that when it was never known? So it, it's more of a secretive process too, the way it is, and it should be like, like Greg said, it should be televised and, you know, people have input. As a matter of fact, on the informational hearings that we are allowed to have, we encourage actually for new filings, neighbors will walk in the committee and give their thoughts at the same time, too, so here's the posted meeting.
How many of these new proposals would you say are historically filtered out before they would make it to the planning board as it stands today?
Couldn't even guess.
Yeah.
Couldn't even guess. We don't have any filed with forms of these reports. We have no copying when it's done, so I, I really couldn't say.
That's the point.
I can tell you that Island Lighting, who was there for a long time with ten or twelve cranes, when this, and Island Lighting came in when it was all commercial. But they're parking a whole bunch of commercial vehicles on a residential lot with a home right there that's rented out to a, uh, a senior citizen. And I mean, but you're, you're gonna go parking a commercial vehicle on a residential lot, there's, uh, filings required to even allow to do that. And it's been done on the past, and, uh, there never was any permitting involved in that.
So the, the challenge part, though, is if you, if you contemplate doing the change and it goes to the planning board, which I'm not necessarily saying is, is, it does make sense, but it does, from an applicant's standpoint, it does create time, because I did, in my email I sent to the board, Anne's Market, which is a new business that's gone in on Holbrook Street, and I think a lot of people have been excited about it, went through an F eleven A process. And it's operational, but there was a site plan there before. And so determination was made, it didn't need it, and I think that's a great example of how it's pretty streamlined.
It made great sense. Right, right. That was much more simple.
So, so in some respects, it seems like we might tweak the language so that way there's, you know, we don't go to the extreme where four, Six Hill Street, which as more information's discovered how they're gonna operate, slips through. But we also allow for that opportunity where Anne's Market doesn't have to necessarily go to the planning board. Another example which I did talk to Bob about is.
Well, they also went to the selectors too, so most of these businesses coming in are going to some board to let them know they're coming.
And the cable companies, another example, actually across the street. They went into the, the plaza there on an F eleven A as well. So there's, you know.
A lot of times it is.
There are some good examples of the process.
A lot of times, yeah. It just happened at one time, but was not.
So what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to find the balance here.
I know, try to quantify, yeah.
I'm trying to find the balance here between not hindering these cases that are much simpler or easier to address, while still being able to take on the ones that are a little bit more complex. Is there a way that the commissioner, instead of issuing a determination, can issue a recommendation to this board? And this board can review as to if they are complex or not complex, and choose which ones we decide to review in more detail?
Well, if he makes a decision, does that mean the ones he decides not to turn to us, he just handles?
No, we would be the ones who would make that determination.
So he sends everybody?
He would recommend to us, these ones do not, these ones do. We would review that and identify, well, that one's a little bit more complex, why don't we hear this one out?
Right, right. Well.
I think, I'm gonna interrupt. We, I think we could, obviously we can tweak, you know, make changes to the language.
Yeah.
One is kind of this time sensitivity, cause this town meeting's coming up in November.
Yep.
Are we significantly exposed if we don't make the change in November and work something through, well, just.
Yeah.
Are we, are we exposed if we don't do something until May? That's one scenario. The second scenario is you could make this change in November and follow up with something that's a little bit worked through. Recognizing, letting the voters know that, the town meeting that this.
How would the voters like to handle it?
Yeah, I mean, you could say, hey, look, we're doing this change as a stopgap, but we do need to work this through a little bit more. It's, or, another scenario was, maybe the commissioner would just, uh, under agreement through the planning board, send F elevens here.
I was gonna say, he's, he's a town employee. He doesn't live in Morocco. I mean, you'd be able to talk to him about what we're gonna do in the interim.
Just send F eleven As right now.
Right.
That come in to the board.
After they're already signed?
No, he gets an F eleven A and when it comes in, he just sends it to the board to, to.
So, so basically, all of the, our investigation on the business, in this case, it was very dissimilar.
Right.
Is all done at that level. When we started talking and you were there, we started talking to this ned. I mean, you start questioning, the, the traffic is the same as Island Lighting? Many people would disagree.
But there must be, there must be an out in there that says the F eleven decision is void if the business goes in, ends up being different than the one that was there.
It's not.
Well, that's what should be there.
And, uh, he also had never told Bob that he intended to sub out part of the space to a landscaper. So Bob just ended up, uh, evicting a landscaper that moved in behind books about three years ago uh, because it's a, a business used in a mixed zone. It wasn't allowed, so basically, you know, the whole setup with one man having a business with needing fifty-two parking spots didn't really add up. Just to get, it deserved further review, that's all.
The process. There might be other compromises, though. I mean, if we could, if we could change the existing language, what it is to say that if, after the building commissioner approves it, the use change is deemed excessive, or it's determined that there never was a site plan, that the F eleven A approval is revoked, right?
Well, determining if there was a site plan is already in there. It's in there right now. It was one of the requirements to issue an F eleven A.
Right, it just didn't get caught by the commissioner at the time. Right, but that's not a process failure. That's a.
Does the commissioner want to retain his authority in this decision, or have, have you talked to him? Is, is this because it's a?
Well, he's been our injured.
He is gonna hurt.
But I, I, I wouldn't take kid care at all. I don't know why he would.
But if he doesn't care, and it's, it's, it's more effective to do it here, then what's the question?
So he doesn't, he isn't, uh, I talked to him on the phone, so, I mean, if he got changed to the planning board, he doesn't. It's fine. He's not having, you know, objection to going to the planning board. It's more just being thoughtful about making that change, what the ripple effect is, and we don't wanna, you know, create an outcome.
The objection is, is many of us sit here and talk about making an environment that's more friendly for development in town. Adding restrictions to that development isn't making it more friendly. Adding restrictions to that development isn't making it more friendly.
No, but it protects the town.
It's not a restriction, it's just-
You don't want, you don't want a repeat of what happened in four to six, four to six Hills.
We can reiterate to the building commissioner the, our expectations on his judgments. We don't have to change law.
There is another process, as you know, let's say that we go ahead and approve Rich's language that, for the article in the town meeting. There is a process on the town floor where you can amend that language if, if between now and then we create such a amendment that says, there's a better way, it's a compromise, and here's what we propose. We could do that on the town floor. I don't think we can leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
We've got, we've got to make a change. To protect the town, we do, we, we can't let that happen again.
If someone can bypass the planning board and the question on the F one A, they're all one-word responses. Is your business similar? Is the traffic the same?
Yeah.
Is the, is it out the same? I mean, if you start to question, is the traffic the same, and you find out really what's going on, you may find, well, the traffic's not the same. Traffic is a different business. When you find out they're storing sand and salt, and if a landscaper comes in, that would be another product and they're storing it in an area where there are town wells. Now, we had a landscaper up in David Ave that applied for a site plan because it was a new business. And he ended up leaving because all the storage he was gonna do all created a problem with the Board of Health and all the surrounding wells. So, there's this salt shack right there now that he's redoing. And if you're gonna, if you're gonna rent this out to a landscaper, I think, what's the landscaper gonna store? Normally, they have hodscape, they have sand and salt because they plow in the winter too and, you know. So, you got all of these questions that I, I don't know, you know, how much Bob knew before he, he said, okay, it's a similar business.
What, well, you would have, number one, you, you have to have a hearing, so there'll be the opportunity to get more input. You decide, you know, to go forward with it, at least there is a placeholder. I talked to Jack about that, so we have room on the warrant with this article.
Yeah, the people can decide if, if they think it's fine, that's just fine.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's a couple bites at the apple.
Yeah, yeah.
At this. I am, I mean, your point's taken, I mean, you want, we need to, you know, there's been the discussion of trying to be business friendly, but you also have to have, you know, have the opportunity for the residents to know about something that impacts them. You know, not, you know, so we need a balance essentially.
You're, you're wondering about filtering the easy things out, if you could filter the easy things out.
If we're questioning the ability of our building commissioner to defend the interests of the town, that, that's a bigger problem. That, changing a process, that's, that's-
How does this work in other municipalities? Is the building commissioner in charge of this in other areas or is it very, I don't know?
I think it, I don't know, I could pull some other town. I mean, I know where I worked before, it was the, it was the planning board that did it. So, we went, it wasn't left up to the building commissioner, went to the planning board.
Is this something that we-
The first contact for the planning board typically is this gentleman.
Right. So, the thing is though, the one, so, right now, not to wanna advocate for more meetings, but you meet once a month. Where I worked before, it was, they met a couple times a month. So, somebody came in for determination, you had a quicker opportunity to get to the board for determination. Where here, right now, it's, you meet once a month. So, there is a lag time that does play a part if it goes to the planning board, just make it aware of it, just, if, if you-
Well, keep in mind, this man got the F one eleven four months ago and he still hasn't done any of that.
No, I-
I don't make businesses that decide to go off on a venture and then within thirty days, they're in business moving.
No, I understand, I understand.
I think that-
I mean, someone's perception too, doesn't it?
I think the frequency of our meetings is determined by the workload. You know, we, we are, at once a month, adequately servicing the developers that come in front of us, I think, at the, at the moment. If, if the workload doubled, we'd double our meetings, I think.
But we have no idea of what that new influx of reviews would be at this point.
Somebody didn't like that idea, Walter.
Pardon me?
Somebody didn't like that idea.
The background.
Yeah, no, we don't know, yeah, I can't, I mean, I think the thing that certainly to do is between now and gonna, if you vote to recommend and go forward and then hold a hearing on it, is to talk to Bob and, and, you know, see how many F eleven As there have been to get, you know, better feel for the board of, you know, what's come in previously. And then, as well as get F eleven As that they end up to the planning board that perhaps you don't even know about, but they didn't communicate it out to the board necessarily through the, over the years. Because it's been in the bylaw for, you know-
Unless, unless, but unless you know the details of the business, you don't know whether it's the same or not.
No, no, I mean, it's not a, it's more of a qualitative, yeah, qualitative look at things to see where they're at.
So, that's less about the individual, more about the forum, right?
Yeah.
Well, if you have five folks and a trained planner questioning a business and how this thing is gonna operate. Is the operation really the same? You're gonna be a lot better off than someone that really is a, a building commissioner that, he makes zoning interpretations all the time. That's his job, that's what he does. This is just something in zoning, many things run zoning, some handled by the ZVA, some handled by us, some handled by the Board of Health. All depend who has the specialty in that area of zoning. That's why we changed a bunch, as I said, from the ZVA, which is the hardship board, to this board, which is, should be determining planning. Like earth removal or drive-through windows or drainage or things like that, yeah. There's been a lot of changes over the past number of years, so.
Would you see all the documents, would, do they go through you before they come in here? All applications to planning board go through you or?
If it changed?
Uh, anything, would you see the F, yeah, if it changed, would you see the F eleven As?
If it changed, we would, yeah, we'd come here.
Right now, right now you don't.
Well, I didn't see the F eleven till-
If you saw this F eleven that has caused all the uproar, it's pretty benign. If you didn't have these, this uproar, no one would know. I mean, it's pretty benign. So, the, the face on form is just, it's just yes and no questions, basically.
So, in, in that sense then, there is no way to sift out the easier cases from the more complex ones?
Unless you ask.
Unless, now you have, now you're talking about doing a form review for everything.
You're talking about questioning the person.
Yeah, you definitely, you would have to, yeah, well, I thought we maybe sent you the F eleven A in this case? If not, we could send it to you, you could see the form and see the questions that are on there, so, yeah.
You didn't send it to me.
No?
Still, I, I'd be interested to hear Jack's opinion on this, but I mean, if the two qualifications to the F eleven are change of use and previous site plan approval. If you were to find out that, that there actually is a significant change of use or there isn't a site plan approval, the, the town's gotta have rights to revoke the, the decision.
There's no right, there's no right.
Well, then, there should be.
Well, there isn't, that's the law.
Then that's what we should change.
You could change state law, good luck.
Is the F eleven A a state form?
Yes, it's a state.
No, no, it's ours.
We have no right to change the, with that in his hand, we have no right to change it.
Why can't we change the form?
That's what you did, we have no right to change it.
Make it more descriptive.
No, we can't change, well, so the form is based on what's in section F eleven A. So, if you go in section F eleven A, one, A through F.
Yeah.
A through E is on that form, so just, if you look.
But it's all just yes, no questions.
Yeah, it doesn't-
There's a lot of different questions based on to determine if the business is essentially the same.
The challenge is you're asking an applicant.
Yeah.
You're asking, so applicant's gonna answer these questions who, you know.
Can the applicant be-
How far do they go to answer your question to get me into site plan versus not site plan? You know, that's the, that's the, that's the nuance of it in this particular case.
But shouldn't the applicant have a professional fill out the form, so the professional isn't just doing a yes, no?
There we go again.
And, uh-
Well, that's, I mean, then you're an outlier, I mean, it's just, it, it may be, if you add it all up. And I'm not, not saying, you know, just to be clear, I'm not saying it should go to the planning board either, I just, it's just how it comes here is what I wanna make sure that we, you know, we don't go in a reverse direction, that we're making it more, you know, harder than it needs to be. But we could also change some of the language, so it's, it can't be misinterpreted at all.
What do you mean?
So, if this building commissioner, whoever that person is, reads there, you hit a criteria and if you need something, for example, a special permit, if he needs a special permit, any special permit at all, it's out.
Right, we know that.
It's, it's gotta go site plan review.
Now, come to find out, it's a great point. Now, to come to find out upon questioning, when you have heavy equipment in your backyard not registered, that's not regular parking, that's a contractor's yard. When the contractor is gonna be in the, which is a special permit. When the contractor is, got headquarters, which means the building leader's gonna have his office, that's a special permit for, am I correct, for contractors' headquarters.
Right.
Nothing in our zoning rules is, and Bob is probably the most knowledgeable in all the zoning rules, without a doubt.
So, one consideration I want, and if you're interested, is to maybe have another meeting. It's like October third, isn't it?
I mean, I think it would be, I think it would behoove us to talk to Jack and Bob before we put it to the town.
What's Jack got to do with it? That's against Jack, but what he's got to do with it, he's a town administrator.
I meant council, I keep thinking he's town council.
Dave?
Yeah. I don't know.
That has any bearing either.
This is a, this is a, this is a planning, this is a site plan issue, this is to do with business. This is to do with the operations of a business.
No, no, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, we can't talk.
Someone's gonna get through with, uh, something, a different business.
Do you need F eleven As have to be a matter of public hearing? Can't they just come to us, we each get an email and then we decide who to bring into a meeting?
That's how it would be, they would informally come in, we'd talk about their business and we would-
But only the ones that we wanted to come in, not all like we didn't-
It's the same thing that the conservation commission has, we call it a request for determination. They come in, I wanna put this septic system in this buffer zone or whatever, I'm gonna put a hay bale here, fine, do it. Say, no, you really can affect resources, now go back and you have to file a notice of intent. So, it's the same exact process. So, we don't make anybody go through a notice of intent unless there really is a, a harm to the resource area. So, that's a perfect example. It's a very simple form where they come in.
How many of those do you get?
Four.
We get a sheer number.
Oh, no, obviously, I have them like-
Well, anytime you're gonna put a septic system in an older area, you're always gonna be probably near a resource area with all the ponds and wetlands in this town.
Right.
So, very many, actually. People, most, many people in this town can't even put a deck on their house.
Right.
Because they're within a hundred feet, so.
Yep.
So, if we, if we reviewed an F eleven A and it is as the applicant states, it's very simple, there's no change in use and, and it should've been fast-tracked, we still have to go through open hearings because it came into here?
Well, that's my point, you can't review necessarily an F eleven A. Bob doesn't, Bob questions the guy and decides whether his questions are, are proper and then decides from that. So, we would, we'd be eliminating this F eleven A and just deciding whether he should file a site plan or not, so.
So, is it possible, potentially, to have like a meeting? Because we'd have to put something to the paper by October fourth, just to kinda vet this a little bit more, like the first, October first, second, even the third to, uh-
Because the issue is that we need to vote on something prior to the warrant being closed, correct?
Yeah, it's a placeholder and then we're gonna have to advertise it public hearing wise. And to Walter's point, we have room on town meeting floor, but you don't have complete carte blanche at town meeting floor to make changes to the bottom, you know what I mean?
No, it's, it's gonna be less, it can be less restrictive, that's all.
Less restrictive.
And in fact, experience has suggested that, that making zoning changes at an ad hoc basis
Not wise, yeah.
On the town floor is not a wise thing to do. However, if the amendment came from a planning board, that's a different situation than some citizens sitting out there coming up with an amendment which-
I think you might, I agree, but you, I think the board itself would be a little bit constrained how far you could amend what was already advertised.
Yeah, this is state law, in which you, you could be less, less restrictive.
So, I was just suggesting that if it was, if people were, if it was available, that we'd have another, another conversation on this, just so you could-
Well, you mentioned that some dates, uh, the first three days of October are not available.
Not available, yeah.
The fourth, I, let's see, what I probably could do, but-
Don't we have to have a public hearing for the zoning guy to go away?
Yeah, you do, so.
Why don't we just do it then?
At the public hearing? Um, that's what I'm worried about, depends what change and how far we've gone.
What do you mean, you mean writing it up beforehand?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's one thing to have advertised, X, now this is what we're doing, proposing to do, and then we really start altering it, you know, significantly. But like I said, the first thing is we could, you could go through what's there and see what happens at town meeting and, but, uh, I understand concerns, I'm a little concerned about rushing it through though, that's the other thing that kinda, I don't, it's a give and take here, like, wanna be thoughtful about the change too.
Does anybody here wanna leave it the same as it is, no?
I don't think we should leave it the same either, so I just wanna be-
Anybody who's interested in leaving it the same as it is, no?
No, no.
No, I agree with you, I think that we need to do something to protect ourselves. But I, I, I also don't wanna crush a spider with a boulder, you know? I wanna make sure that we're applying the appropriate amount of oversight without hindering the process any further for those that don't require it.
It's, it's not a matter of using a different stone, it's a matter of rather going to building commissioner who comes to us. Rather than sitting with him, he says to us.
Once a month?
What's that?
Once a month when we do meet.
Correct.
If they can make it at seven o'clock at night.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
As Walter suggested, I mean, if, if there's a, if there's some circumstance from a timing issue related to one, I certainly could call them and say, hey, look, here's, you know, this is a situation and perhaps, you know, convene a meeting, you know? I mean, it doesn't provide availability to the board, but-
I don't think there's a new business that starts in town that, that doesn't need the floor for a second. Not many.
I think we've seen everyone so far.
Most of them need a special permit along the way, or a common pictures license or-
In my time, the ones that have come through, I've seen them all, at some point or another.
Right, exactly.
So, maybe we might be overthinking, I guess, the time, I don't know, I mean, so you wanna go as is to, to move it towards a hearing or not, or what's the flavor of the board on this?
As is being the change to the planning board, that's just those two words.
Correct, that's right. What, what I gave you is, it's just a clean, remove and replace. So, where it says building commissioners, we gotta just check and make sure I, I got them all, I believe that I checked myself, but it becomes the planning board. And then with the other change I did mention earlier about taking out the whole application thing, because we're gonna be going towards, it's already covered in the rules and regulations.
What do you think?
I, I, I personally don't see the need for a change. I, I hear what John's saying, I think there's other ways to deal with it. I mean, but I don't, and again, I, I might be the minority here and my opinion is moot, so. If, if, if we're putting it to a vote, then, I mean, is this a unanimous decision or is it a?
No, it's just a decision of majority.
Yeah, so.
Actually, minds mode, I'm the only one that doesn't get to it, so.
But respect it.
Yes, indeed. I don't mind putting it under the-
I don't mind putting it under the guise of the planning board, however, I do think that the form can be expanded into more detail. Even if it's a yes, like, explain the existing business, describe existing business, describe future business. We get those forms in, and we can look at it, and then determine whether or not we wanna bring them before the board for more information. I think that we can expand the form enough to get enough information where if it is cut and dry, if it is pretty easy, we could just be like, yes. We'll get them via email, PDF, whatever. Then we can expedite the process.
That's the case. I think that Bob should continue to do it.
The, 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 the vain difference between the board and Bob is Bob can do it every day. The board can do it once a month.
See, I, it, it seems to me, I said this before, that this fellow's in his chair every day, and he has the knowledge of what, what the planning board requires. He's access to all the, the rules and regs. And if he cooperated with, uh, with Bob, then Bob could get a little backup that says, hey, uh, guess what? What about this? What about that? This fellow isn't really coming forward with all the information. It really requires that it come in front of the board. So there's a compromise in between that, uh.
You know, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna get called by the ZVA chair to get into this at all. Just thank God I wasn't on the list of the emails from these butterers.
Yes.
And all of the, whatever they were.
Yeah.
But when the ZVA chairman comes to me upset why this isn't going to the planning board.
Yeah.
And I get into the thing and find out, whoa, it really should have. And he went over with the building commissioner and Jack this matter, and there was vehement disagreement amongst the three. Vehement disagreement. So Chris is the one getting the, uh, the contacts from the butterers and not part of the decision-making. Asking to rule on things when he felt that the proper step was a site plan first, before he even made these decisions on special permits. So, I mean, there's obviously a major disconnection here with the, with the people involved, so. And me, I don't really care for an extra meeting myself, you know, but whoever you want, but.
Yeah.
If you're looking for a time element, when you're affecting the people's livelihoods next door, then good, then, then be efficient, you know? We had to make sure everybody's, everybody's way of life was not disturbed, and somebody else comes in and does something on land abutting them. That's our job. And right now, it's failed with these people. But anyways.
Well, I support the language that Rich proposes. And it, I recognize the, the downside, which is once a day versus once a month. But I'm looking for the protection.
We don't know if that's a downside either. We're just somewhat speculating at the moment. If it's a real downside.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Do we, now how many, do we talk about how many of these we get on a monthly basis?
There we go.
I don't know. I can, I mean, that, I'm gonna find out for, you know, when you have the hearing, so you know kind of some ideas, so.
Well, doesn't, maybe I missed something, but aren't the, aren't these all new businesses?
Yes.
Yeah, the new businesses.
So therefore, we do have some indication of how many we get, because they all come in front of the Board of Selectmen, right?
I mean, this one never came before the Board of Selectmen.
It didn't?
I never seen, I mean, unless it happened before I got on the board, I've never seen this one come across.
Well, they're not here yet. I mean, they're, so, um.
He thought that he could go in there with no permits or everything by right, just do it.
And that's what we need protection against. We need protection against that specific instance, right?
How do you know how many of these instances have happened?
That's a great point.
Nobody knows, nobody knows. You'll know if it's next to you. I know the people that are next to this place know about it. They knew about it unfortunately, three months after this whole thing was consummated. So the appeal period had run out, so.
The location means everything when it comes to this situation.
Totally, totally.
I mean, so many changes in a, in the industrial park and.
Well, again.
Nobody knows, you know, it's like no harm, no foul.
This was created mixing commercial with residential.
Right.
You're gonna have it.
Right, but exactly.
That, that could be a red flag for the building commission. If it's a commercial property next to a residential property, reject the F eleven. Why not? He's got the right. It's his decision. He can do what he wants.
That would be like a baseless decision. You must say change, you must say change the code. You must change the, the, uh, regs.
I don't, I don't know enough about it, so.
Well, no, your point, I mean, you know, again, we could add that as a require, I mean, as part of the analysis. It doesn't say that now.
What?
Adjacency to residency, you know, it's like an automatic.
But you, but you, but you're directly conflicting with the zoning.
No, I'm saying change the zoning, too.
You're gonna get rid of the residential in the C one district?
No, 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 no.
Oh, it's.
No, if somebody comes in, to your point is, one of the questions, is there a budding residential? Not even zone, a residential home adjacent to it, you know? That's an automatic trigger, you know?
That was right on the map that he submitted with his business, because where half of the parking was, was on a residential lot, was a senior citizen there that he rented.
No, I know, I know. It's just not in that. Right now, it's not in the code, that's the thing.
Well, we were kinda going around to get a feel for where we've, where we are in the language, and we got halfway, so how do you feel about it?
I, I would love if we had some of these parameters outlined for us in terms of how many of these we plan on seeing and what's being done in other towns. Given the situation that we're in right now, I feel like there's a gap, and the gap needs to be filled while we figure the rest of this out, so I would support this language in the interim. Knowing that I do not wanna go to town meeting and propose an amendment to lower the restrictions and risk having the entire thing be voted down. Thereby leaving ourselves still open at the end of the day.
Mm, understood.
So I think that, if we're gonna put this in place, I think that we should aim to put it in place and have it be voted in and support it to be voted in.
Yeah, and if we choose to, to change it, we do so at the next town meeting.
Correct.
Right, okay. Craig, what do you think?
I agree with that.
Sir?
Um, I'm okay with the change. I read through the language earlier. Yeah, I just, I, I don't think anyone here can quantify the scope of the problem, so that's, uh, perhaps, but, uh. It could be ten a year, which case isn't a large burden to this group, but regardless of the burden, uh, it's the protection that you pointed to, so, yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with the change.
So there you have it.
It's scheduled for, uh. It's over twenty-four. Help here.
Okay, yep.
We'll have the other, the zone two changes that we, we reviewed. That would go on there as well.
How many, uh, new businesses come before the Board of Selectmen?
Um, I've been on the board since May, and I have seen four.
Four. And the correct process, this would have been captured by your group, the, the.
When he was ready to move forward and had everything in place, I believe that's the case, yes.
There's roughly one a month.
Yeah.
Roughly speaking, yeah.
Roughly.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we have one more piece of business. Minutes to be approved.
Motion to approve minutes.
Of the meeting of, what is it? Of, uh.
Last month.
Wednesday, August twenty-twoth.
Twenty-twoth, nice.
A motion to approve the minutes from, uh, the meeting last month on August twenty-second, two thousand eighteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And they are approved. We have any other new business? Hearing none, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
This was presiding here.